So, good evening and welcome to the December 12th Planning Commission Meeting. Liz, you want to call or order?
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
Present.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Berube.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the meeting agenda. Were there any edits to the agenda or is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the meeting minutes from the November 28th Planning Commission. Were there any edits to those?
I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, we have three public hearings tonight. The first one is the Greater Southdale District Plan. And with that quick intro, jumping right into it.
Sure. I will introduce Michael Schroeder, who's coming up to the microphone. He is one of our co-chairs for the working group and he will present the plan.
Thank you.
There are also many question members here tonight after many years of discussions. As some of you know well how much time we've been directing to this. My name is Michael Schroeder and I was a co-chair of the work group that's been working for about three and a half years on the development of the Greater Southdale District Plan. And several members of the work group are here tonight. And I don't want, I'm not going to speak long, but I do want to run through a presentation that outlines a little bit of how we got to where we are in the Greater Southdale District Plan. And I will also speak briefly to the Design Experience Guidelines, which you're not being asked to approve tonight, but really are part and parcel of how we've been, we've been looking at the district and its evolution. So, when we look at this, this is just a representation of our work group and this is, for people who have tracked us, you see, you've seen this before. We have worked with a philosophy that the community is driving this plan, that we will engage consultants as guides, but not as directors or lecturers in our work. And we have throughout our process provided opportunities for the public to engage us through formal and informal events and in every one of our meetings, which certainly number into the, I don't know, 40s or 50s by now if we trace over the course of the last several years. Our work really happened in three stages. The first stage was an effort to simply define a series of working principles, which we brought to you several years ago. We weren't imagining that they would be adopted, but they eventually were. Our intent in the working principles was to provide ourselves a guide for how we would move through our work. And it turns out that they provided for the city some interim guidance in reviewing proposals for change. But really what they were for us was a way of beginning to establish a dialogue about what we would imagine happening in the Greater Southdale District. Our Stage Two was related to the establishment of a framework for change. And this diagram here begins to show a pattern of 200-foot square blocks, frequent crossings of streets, broad boulevards, new public spaces, and a series of kind of neighborhoods established throughout the Greater Southdale District. This was a stage where we engaged the work of, the help of a consultant, Architectural Field Office. And this really became the springboard for our work in the, in the, in the later, in the current stage. We not only defined a framework, we began to articulate the kind of, the quality of the spaces and features would be, that would be creating through the district, not by prescription, but rather by the idea that there's a quality of experience that would be necessary to support the directions we were trying to go. So, the pictures that I just flipped through, I'm not going to spend time talking about them, but they begin to describe some of the core ideas that we imagined in an evolution of the change, evolution and change in the Southdale area. When we got to what we called Stage Three and Four, it related to the comprehensive plan. And this was the work that we started at about the same time that you were starting your work in the comprehensive plan. And we really looked at a couple of key things. We were looking at a document that would provide consistency with the requirements for the comprehensive plan, as well as providing an aspirational outlook for an area of our community that is in excess of 750 acres, that we would look to innovation and invention as some of the core parameters for change, and that we would be looking to leadership from within the community for how that change would happen. It was important to us, as we went through this process, as we went through all of the other processes, that our, our work group was founded in dialogue, that we continued in dialogue, and even as we step out of this process, we're making suggestions about how the evolution of the district will be best founded in a continuing dialogue between those people who have interests in the district, those people who make decisions about change, and developers or others who might step into the district in the future. So, we really were looking at creating three deliverables. The policy plan, which is the document that you'll be looking at tonight, which aligns with the city's comprehensive plan update, a set of what we call Design Experience Guidelines, because our dialogue started with an idea of what it was, would be like for people to actually be in that district and to begin shaping the form of the public and private realm around experiences that people would have there. And a third piece was looking at implementation review processes, because as we got into our process, we realized that there were some shortcomings in how the community was actually looking at processes and trying to understand proposals for change. One of the things that's important in this, and as we look at where the Southdale District is relative to the rest of our community, we recognize that the comprehensive plan is a 10-year incremental planning document. But as we looked at this, it was important for us to look forward over a period of probably 40 or 50 years to understand how change might happen in this district. So, our planning process included two open houses and I'm not going to get into the detail that I, that we have here. All of this information is online. All of the comments that we received from the open house are included. But when we had our first open house, we had lots of input related to heights, particularly on France Avenue, and particular to one part of France Avenue. There were comments about transportation, walkability, about building design, about housing people, housing and people, infrastructure and processes. And this is just kind of an articulation. I'm not going to spend a lot of time reviewing these, because we did take a lot of these and begin working them into our final documents. So, that was the, the planning processes that led to the first draft document, the first draft document of the Design Experience Guidelines. We looked at very closely. We drafted 225 comments and asked our consultants to look at them and respond to them and provided pretty explicit direction for change. When we got to the policy plan, the document you're looking at tonight, the work group assembled more than 370 documents. It was pages and pages. We thought our consultants would run away from us, but they stuck with us. And we actually made some substantive changes to the document that, that you're seeing tonight. And it, and they're reflected then again in the Design Experience Guidelines. So, this is the document that we have before you tonight. It's aligned with the comprehensive plan update that you've been working through in 2018. For us, we had to recognize that as, as you, as you're looking at small area plans, this was not a small area. We started calling it a district at some point during 2017 or 2018, recognizing that it's significantly different with all of its influences than the other areas that you've been looking at for planning. It relies on the Design Experience Guidelines as an augmentation for the, the design of sites, buildings in the public realm. And it's framed around the same topical areas that your comprehensive plan is looked at. So, when you get into the, the core of the document, we talk about economic vitality and competitiveness, urban design, land use, transportation and mobility, parks and public life, district services and facilities, sustainability and water resources. But it also is framed around a vision that we articulated and a series of aspirations. Knowing that this is the document that has to provide guidance, not just for a period of a few years, but for a period of a few decades of evolution, we thought it was important that we reflect on those aspirations that we've held through, held constant through the several years of our, of our work. So, as we get into this, the basic structure is that we frame a vision. And the vision is encapsulated here, but it's actually a longer set of narrative about the evolution of the district. We also have 11 aspirations, so the pages that I'm showing here are actually drawn from the document. So, we have aspirations like aspiration number 10, expect the delivery of high-quality, well-designed buildings and sites. And we, we articulate how we imagine that to happen at a very high level in this document. We also have a set of goals that define the broad intentions for the district's evolution, and then the actions or the policies that will be taken to help us realize those goals. The policy plan includes section, a section on urban design. And again, we pull out specific sections of it here. A big part of what we looked at is how do we establish a pattern that relates to the goals we have for walkability and a greater pedestrian or human experience. And we talk about, a lot about the 200-foot by 200-foot blocks that we establish as the baseline for the patterning of the district. We also talk about the scale and the form of the district as we move through from an urban design perspective. So, even as we talk about more specifics, eventually in the Design Experience Guidelines, we had identified key urban design policies and goals in the policy plan. We also talk about land use. And while we had great debates about how you actually calculate density, suggesting that units per acre is a rather poor way of actually looking at density, we do articulate for all of the, for each of the land use categories, what the range of density would be throughout the, the Greater Southdale District. We talk about the, the general patterns of land use. And when you, if you're to look closely, the doc, the diagram on the left is the existing land use. The diagram on the right is the planned land use. And you'll see there are basically three major patterns that run through the district. There is the office residential that actually extends through the Pentagon areas as we looked at how guidance for that area might impact upon the Southdale area and particularly the, the south end of the district. It was important for us to begin recognizing that. We have the Community Activity Center, which is the core of the district between France Avenue and York Avenue, and different, differing degrees of medium and, differing degrees of residential with medium and high density. In particular, there is the Regional Medical District that's shown, kind of in the northwesterly portion of the district. As we went through this, this became a really important area for us to focus on. And frankly, it aligns with other initiatives that other groups in the cities, our city is looking at relative to the Fairview Southdale Hospital and regional medical facilities. We looked at a lot of different kinds of diagrams. The one on the left is the land-to-value ratio, helping us understand where we would see change happening. And in fact, we knew at every step through this process that there was change happening in the district. And it's a big part of why we, why we needed to focus not just in policy, but in design guide, in some kind of design guidance. We also looked at building age to help us understand where we, where we could be imagining change to be happening. Importantly, the second land use goal we have is talking about managing density. And we have transition guidance on each of the kind of shoulders of the district, in that area between France Avenue and the Cornelia neighborhood on the west, and between York Avenue and Xerxes Avenue or the Richfield border on the east. And so, we get back to, in this document, higher-level goals like ensuring a harmonious transitions and, and a series of other things that attempt to set a good relationship between development and potential redevelopment in the district and those single or two-family uses that exist on, just to the outsides of, of the core of the district. We also have a big piece on parks and public life. And it, it was really important to us, as we went through this, to begin, or to, to keep imagining how people act in this district. It's really difficult to imagine a transition from an auto-dominated district that we see today with a six-lane France Avenue with huge parking lots to something that would actually attract people to walk and stay. But we do talk a lot about the, the need for and the evolution of spaces to create new parks and new public life. This diagram begins to show the connections between Centennial Lakes at the southerly end of the district through a potentially similar, similarly sized public space somewhere in the northerly end of the district, and the need to extend the promenade up to and even somehow across the crosstown landing in Strachauer Park, and from the south end of Centennial Lakes, reaching westward through the Pentagon Park District and tying into the Nine Mile Creek Trail and the Fred Richards Park. The Design Experience Guidelines are the complement to this. So, where we have higher-order goals, policies in the district policy plan, we go through the process of defining what the experience of the district will be like in more specific terms in the Design Experience Guidelines. And I'll run through this quickly as well. We talk about the 200-by-200 grid. And we know that it's not strictly applied to the district, because we can't do that all the way through. But we know that the 200-by-200 foot grid is important in establishing the patterns of walkability that we felt were important in an evolution from an auto-dominated center to a more walkable place. We talked a lot about the primary components of the public realm experience, including street rooms and building forms, crossings and connections. While we don't always get to specific numbers, we do have some things that we think are really important in framing and evolution of the district. Under building form, we talk about the first level of a building being 20 feet tall, so it gains dominance from the pedestrian experience. The building facade should have 75% transparency. So, there's a relationship between people walking on, on a street, a new street or, or an existing street, and the activities that might be happening in the building. So, so these begin to wrap into then a series of guidelines that talk about transition and particularly street room typologies. And we identified a series of street rooms, that's a duplicate of a slide, sorry about that, where we moved from transitional ideas around what we called the West Promenade, Typology 1A. And when we had our open house, this was a highlight for many people, looking at this diagram, trying to understand the relationship between the Cornelia neighborhood and development along France Avenue. And this became important, because what we framed was a series of dimensional ideas framed in feet, not in stories, so that we could begin to understand and share with people the relationship between single-family or two-family homes in the neighborhood, and shown on the right in the diagram, to the buildings that would be along France Avenue. We did this for all of the street typologies. And importantly, this last one that I showed was a significant change to the document, to the first draft of the document, where the work group came back and said, from an area that's at about 69th to Gallagher on the west side, the direction needs to be different. Initially, we had, I think it was eight-story buildings in that area. We came back and changed the, the direction significantly and was, we were more explicit about the transition in building height from the, the portions of the parcel that would have but France Avenue to those portions that would have but the, the neighborhood on, on the west side. So, each one of our street rooms has the ideas about the width of the street, the kinds of public spaces that are created, the, how traffic moves through, and the way buildings would help shame, shape those street rooms, including when we get to some of the broader streets. And as we move through this, you'll see that there are portions on France Avenue where we encourage a 50-foot setback from the curb for, for buildings to create very wide landscape promenades through the district. And then, of course, we go back and look at the central spine, what we call the promenade, in the area that reaches north out of Centennial Lakes, and the relationship between new buildings and that public space, which we've invested in pretty heavily, another repeat. So, there is a whole lot to try and get through in that document. Our, we, we asked our consultant to step back and say, what do we really need to glean from this? How do you, so if, and he came back, this is Mick Johnson, came back for nine things to be looking at. And as, we would imagine that as bodies consider new projects, this is the place to start, to begin to understand, do they meet these, these nine first talking points? I'll also note that when we went through this process, we heard an awful lot about development in the Southdale District and how it wasn't aligning or was aligning, how it was working in a public process, how it wasn't working in a public process. And we felt it was worth not defining a new process for review of, of projects, but for us to step back and kind of glean from what we heard. So, we talked about a design review process in our urban design section of, of the policy plan. And it focused a lot on the sketch plan. And for several years, for 10 years, I sat in a seat right about there and I looked at sketch plans, I, I wanted to see sketch plans coming forward, where we could actually have a dialogue about what a project would be like. When I was on the Planning Commission, there was no such thing. We, it came about as a result of the 2008 Comp Plan, and we had hoped that the sketch plans would create a great dialogue between a body like yourselves and a developer in the community. It turned into almost a trial run for preliminary plan review, where fancy drawings and much expense was, would go to on the part of developers. And by the time the plan was brought forward, it was no longer a sketch, it was, it looked almost real. So, we're advocating that the dialogue that we had, as we went through this process for three and a half years, be reflected more directly in the sketch plan. We're not mandating this. We're suggesting it as a goal. We're actually suggesting, as a part of our plan, that the Planning Commission reconsider the way that sketch plan actually works to create a process that's more transparent, more democratic, more collaborative, as, as developers bring proposals forward. We did have a, a second community meeting. This was just about a month ago, the 19th, I think it was. And so, there are, there were a lot of comments that were offered on boards. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but I'll, I'll, I'll focus on a couple things that I think are important. The alignment or the timing of our open house with the review of a particular development project on France Avenue seemed to create a lot of energy around one portion of the plan. And so, when you look through the breadth of comments that we had, there were an awful lot of comments that would focus on 7200 and 7250 France Avenue, traffic generated, the height relationship between the buildings and the neighborhood. And as much as we could, we were trying to be agnostic about that project. Our goal was to set a pattern for the whole of the 750 acres of Southdale District, not the five or so acres of 7200, 7250. When we read through the comments that came forward during that meeting, there were a lot that were focused on that. And not that it's the statistically valid way of saying where the comments were focused, but there were a lot of comments on that particular transition and almost, there was one comment on the same relationship we have on the east side of the district, across Xerxes Avenue to Richfield. And the only comment that came back on that is that, don't be a bully to Richfield, or something to that, to that effect. So, there were many comments. If I had an hour, I could go through and highlight, I did highlight some that I thought were, that might be worth talking about if we had more time. But I'm not going to go through all of these tonight, recognizing that a lot of people might want to talk about other things tonight. But I'll stop there and I'll allow you to proceed with the public hearing.
Thank you, Michael. So, first bringing it back to the Planning Commission. Were there any questions, comments, questions for Michael? Questions? Anyone? Commissioner Nemirov?
Well, thanks, Michael. Thanks for everything you've done. I mean, you, you were a volunteer for the city of Edina. You, I, I, I think we got our money's worth out of you. I don't think, I think it's probably not that well-known. I mean, this is something you do professionally, you've done it on a national basis, you do it well, and you put in, you put in major, I don't think it's visible, you put in tremendous amount of hours on this project over three years. And I, I think the city should be really indebted to you for the, just the contribution you made. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. One more generally. There are several goals and policies in this document that could be applicable citywide, perhaps. I mean, how, do you have any suggestion on how we could address, how, how we could get our, you know, what would be a path for us to analyze the goals and policies in here and consider which ones could be made to be citywide goals and policies?
Chair Olson, Commissioner Nemirov, I, I think it's a, actually a really good point. We moved through this process largely in isolation from the rest of the comprehensive plan process. And we benefited from having yourself and Commissioner Hamilton and Chair Olson as a part of this, and other commissioners at different points in our process. But we don't have knowledge of the goals and policies that are being framed or not being framed in other parts of the comprehensive plan. And I think actually our work group would encourage you to look at our work and see if there are gaps where what we're suggesting as goals or policies will work. But I would also, at the same time, caution you, because our deliberations were very focused on the Greater Southdale District. And it's markedly different than other commercial nodes or areas of our city. And so, while there may be some higher-order ideas that, that could apply, we looked at it through the ones of Southdale.
Yeah, that makes sense. And a similar comment, there's some, there were certain goals and policies we discussed in the process, this might be as much of a comment as a question, that were rejected for that reason. And maybe we should circle back and consider those also.
And Commissioner Nemirov, you're, you're correct. There are things that we deferred to the comprehensive plan, because that kind of guidance, a lot of the things around energy efficiency, sustainability, we felt would be covered more appropriately in the sections of the overall comprehensive plan that were being guided by the EEC, or maybe even more broadly than what we could cover in the transportation section. So, there were components that were deferred back to other sections of the comprehensive plan.
Well, thank you very much again, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great. Now, thank you so much. All right. So, this is a public hearing, and we're opening up for public comment. And as explained before, you can come on, come to either one of the podiums and you get three minutes to speak and just please state your name and address. So, for the Greater Southdale Plan, is there a district plan, is there any public comment?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. It's good to be back before you. I'm Bob Erickson, Senior Development Associate for Wildemere and Olympus. Wildemere represented by native son Dennis Doyle, and Olympus represented by Richard Scholes. I'm here tonight to just acknowledge the good work of the, of the committee that's, the working group that's brought this document forward. We followed it closely for the last two years before our application, which subsequently was recommended by yourselves and approved by the City Council. We met with Mick Johnson to ensure that the working principles of the document at that time, some two years ago, were going to be represented accurately in our application. We believe we accomplished that with your guidance and with the City Council's approval. Tonight, I just want to reference two pages within the document, pages 80, excuse me, pages 77 and 78, if you'd take note. Those documents, those Those documents, those pages represent zoning and, and the other represents height overlay districts. The challenge that we perceive in those pages being incorporated, included in this plan is that they're, first of all, they're not completely accurate with today's previous approvals. In our case, for example, it denotes our 22-acre site between 66th and 66th Street and 69th as HOD 4, when in fact, you're aware that we were granted an HOD 8. But more importantly, instead of being specific about its direct impact, the plan's direct impact, impact on our development proposal, in which we're going forward in great measure in 2019. I'm not sure that these documents necessarily belong in this plan and maybe be more appropriate for Kerry Teague to address that instead of myself. But again, we just want to acknowledge the good work of the working group. Michael Schroeder, as stated earlier, did an extraordinary job at the most recent public open house, which was well-attended, I think some 200 individuals were present, lots of good feedback, but more importantly, his succinct overview left everyone, I think, with a very positive feeling about where the city of Edina is going with the Southdale District area and subsequent plan. Thanks for your time this evening. Thanks for your consideration of revisiting the value and importance of those pages within the most recent November 28th draft. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you want to wait until after public comment? Okay, thank you. Hi.
Good evening. My name is John Carlson. I live at 4433 Ellsworth Drive in Edina. I'd like to say I'm impressed by the document. I'm also impressed that the Southdale Working Group was accessible to the neighborhood, not only through the open houses, but they also agreed to meet with us, our small neighborhood group personally. So, so we did have a good chance to give input to it. One issue that I have been concerned about throughout the development of housing in Edina for the last six, eight months as we look at it, is I don't see any document that says, this is the housing market in Edina and this is what we forecast we need. Now, I may be at more of a technical level, tactical level than at the big picture that the plan looks at, but I would like to see a good explanation of what our population growth should look like. What is our population growth goal? Do we just automatically assume the Met Council's goal is right for us? I would hope we would not just assume that. As far as housing is concerned, what is the need for, say, 55-plus housing? What is the need for assisted living housing? Where do we see multifamily housing fit in the picture? What are the numbers that really are there? So if we're flooded with one type of proposal that really doesn't match the population, the demographic needs of the city, how do we evaluate that then? So I think the plan should have a little bit more short-term vision as to what our housing needs are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. I speak in support of the Greater Southdale District Plan and congratulations to the work group and their consultants. You've done a thorough and excellent job of creating a vision and a plan for the future of this very important area of Edina. This plan speaks to who we are as a community and what kind of community we want to become through this plan to address the major and urgent challenges that face us all: high and increasing inequality, a history of racial discrimination in housing and employment, local and regional economic competition in a global economy, and climate change. What I especially love about this plan is that it works as, at a human scale. It is premised on the experience of living and working in this area, and every aspect of it works to promote human interaction, well-being, and understanding across all lines of our diversity. It works to build a healthy, equitable community and to promote community and environmental sustainability. As a strong proponent of affordable housing, I commend your work in the housing section. First, it recognizes that we need a broad range of affordable housing models for a broad range of our, of our population, from young singles to families to seniors, from our service workers to professional people like teachers, nurses, and to school and city staff. Second, the plan encourages the expansion, the expansion of ownership affordable housing where possible. This will enable population that have not enjoyed the benefit of homeownership because of government-sponsored housing discrimination to build equity through homeownership as most of us in this room have done. Third, it urges, it urges exploration of the feasibility of missing middle housing. Missing middle housing was created long ago in streetcar, streetcar communities, and it is suitable in or near residential neighborhoods because it increases density without significantly increasing housing mass or height. Fourth, this plan encourages family housing that is ground-oriented and close to open space, community facilities, and other amenities for children such as daycare, after-school care centers, for example. Finally, this plan recognizes the close interconnection between housing location, density, and the development of public transit. The more public transit we can support, the fewer cars we'll have on the road, the more green space we'll enjoy, even with an increase in population density. I urge you to support the Greater Southdale District Plan as written. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I come with visuals. Can I just put them here? Are we on? Can everyone hear me? My name is Nora Davis and I live at 6921 Southdale Road in the wonderful Lake Cornelia neighborhood. First of all, I too want to compliment the Greater Southdale Work Group. I've been going to their meetings for about a year and have learned so very much. And I was so impressed that they truly captured the concerns of the Cornelia neighborhood with the transition zone and the concerns between 69th and Gallagher, and for that, we thank you. The reason for my boots, I was absolutely delighted to see the Greater Southdale Work Plan have a section on water resources. They're concerned about where I live, that they don't want me to be flooded again. And when I read two feet, I thought, oh, two feet, that's great. I had eight feet before. My boots aren't quite two feet, but I'm hoping that the city is going to follow through and do something to protect that neighborhood. But they also talked about water and how important above-ground water was, that water become part like Centennial Lakes. And I thought that was a great idea and how wonderful that water could not only be a force for beauty, but it could also protect the neighborhood from excess water. So again, I urge that you continue your work on this and approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Done. Oh, it's gone the wrong dress. Sorry, thought he was coming up to speak. He's running out instead.
Hello, my name is Mark Manfred. I live at 4445 Dunham Drive. I don't share the aspirations of one of the previous speakers. I'm quite concerned about the density that this project would bring to the Greater Southdale area into Edina. At one of the previous sessions, presentations of the Greater Southdale Task Force, I asked what was the approximate number of people that would live in this area? And they declined to answer, so I'm going to speculate something here. If only half of the 750 acres was developed at an average density of 65 units per acre with two and a half people per unit, that's over 60,000 people. The current population of Edina is somewhere around 52,000. This would more than double the size of Edina, and they would be packed into this, a very small portion of Edina. And I suspect that most of these would be apartments, so we'd end up with a Edina that is apartment-centric. And I don't know that there's a mandate from the people of Edina that this is what they want. So I would encourage you to identify a maximum number of people that could live in this area. I would propose something on the order of 15,000 people rather than the potential of 60,000 or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great, so I'll bring it back to the planning commission for comments. That's all. Oh, go for it.
Yes, it's, it seems like we have looked at this for years, because we have. And it's been, it seems to me, so fully vetted. I mean, I feel like we have been led along this process almost as if we sat in those very meetings. And years ago, I mean, we were already anticipating these guiding principles, you know, that the Mick Johnson team had put. And, I mean, they're here, but we were, we were, we were being, using this and, and, to our advantages, you know, even as much as two years ago. So it's, it has been a wonderful project, I believe. Compliment them for all your efforts.
Go for it. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I also appreciate the amount of work that went into the plan. I also really appreciate the work that went into the environment, the environmental impact this could possibly have, and consideration for environmental issues that are affecting our community and will be affecting our community more. I think the community-focused and people-oriented, bike-friendly, park, park-filled center would be really helpful in achieving goals of a more sustainable environment. So, yeah, I think that's a cool addition.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner?
So I had some written comments that I submitted to the planning department to be included with this. So I'd like to preface it by saying that, I mean, I too think this is a wonderful document. And I attended about a half dozen of the meetings over the past year, and I was really kind of blown away by the, the amount of work that was put into this and really the deep thinking and just clever solutions that were thought about in terms of making the overall district work together as more than just, just about density or, or housing or streets or anything. It's so comprehensive, it includes so much stuff. So I hate to criticize it at all, but I do think that lately what's been happening with recent reports, such as the IPCC reports from the UN on climate change, and there's also the United States' National Climate Assessment that came out after the Thanksgiving this year. And I think they put a really big exclamation point on the fact that we need to, while everything in this is great, I think in terms of transportation, I think we need to kind of make this a model for how we think the city should develop in the future and how other cities and suburbs can develop and redevelop their, their self, their entities. So I have a few items that I thought that we should think about. And so what I was, my comments were referring only to the implementation section, which is, we received just a week or so ago, so we didn't, I didn't really know what was going to be in it, so I, so I wanted to add some stuff to that. So the idea being that I think one of our goals should be to make this, the idea would be making this mostly car-free by 2050. So the idea is that we think about this not just as a 10-year plan or a 20-year plan, but we need to think, okay, what is the ultimate goal? You know, what do we want? What do we want? And we're not going to do this in 10 years, we're not going to do this in 20 years. But kind of list, you know, the ultimate goal, and then that allows us to, in terms of the implementation, look at, you know, more concrete things. And the things that were included in the implementation section are all excellent, but they, they seem, I don't know, with all the background that we're given and all the information and the great justifications for, you know, how much stuff should change, it just seems, I don't know, timid. And I think one thing we could do would be having, you know, much like we have a affordable housing fund, we could have a parking multimodal fund, which would allow developers to opt out of providing all the parking that's required by, by city code. And the city could use that money for either building joint parking that's used by, we talk about that in all our, in all our small area plans, about having, you know, unified parking. Well, here, this could be a way of, of funding it. And it could also fund bike infrastructure that we really don't have the money for now. We have this, what is it, the Bike and Pedestrian Fund, I forget what it's called, but, and it's funded a lot of sidewalks in the city, and it's painted a few, a few bike lanes. We don't have anything that really makes biking safe and comfortable, which is, I think, what we need, and we need it most in this district, which is going to have a lot of people in it. I don't think it'll have 60,000 people, but I think it will have a lot of people in it. Another thing is that Metro Transit is now proposing the E-line, which is going to mostly, not replace the six bus, but it's going to be, it's going to augment it and be a series of double-reticulated buses that will have a much faster pathway going from South, from the, from the Southdale District to downtown to downtown Minneapolis and to the U of M. And I think, I mean, you know, BRT is mentioned, but I think we should really highlight the E-line and that it should be a goal that, you know, this, this definitely comes to Southdale because right now it's not set in stone that it's going to go all the way to Southdale. I also think that when you look at what we have here and the density that we're talking about here, or potential density that we're talking about here, you know, clearly having everybody own a car is not going to work. And so I think we need, our newly-approved Bike and Pedestrian Plan, you know, doesn't treat this very differently than it does the rest of the city, and there's, I think we need a much more comprehensive bike plan for this area. And then finally, streets like York and France, you know, there's some talk in implementation about make, you know, investigating, making them more pedestrian-friendly, and I, I just don't think that's nearly enough. I think we need to look at them as major transportation hubs for transit. And again, it's not going to happen in 10 years, but I think we need to, to push that much harder than we are today. So I, so these, these items that I've listed, the Parking Multimodal Fund, the E-line BRT, a bike network rather than a bike circle through the city, and then using major streets like France and York as boulevards with transit on them are things that should be added to the implementation section.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Kerry, I forgot, I was going to give you an opportunity to respond to some of the public comments. Would this be a good time?
Certainly. Specifically, the comment about pages 77 and 78, those really are not necessary in a comprehensive plan. What they are is basically a snapshot of our existing zoning, and there's some errors in there. Those two pages could actually come out and it wouldn't impact the document really in any way. Because those are, with the zoning map, the height overlay district and the zoning map itself, that can change periodically over the next 10 years, then we'd have to change each page in the comprehensive plan as well. So it's best that those things are out of So it's best that those things are out of a comprehensive plan.
In general, too, about the housing need and the growth, has it been like an overall citywide plan on housing, or is that covered in the other part of the comp plan?
Well, in terms of studying a need, that could be something separate from the comprehensive plan in regard to, you know, it could be a city council initiative to do a study. What are the needs? I know the city council has talked about doing something like that. That might be the place to do it, separate from the comp plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that was it. Okay, wonderful. All right, well, no other comments. I guess, I'm just going to add, too, it's been an amazing process and a journey, but again, I've also been so lucky to be on this commission, because, or commission, work group, because it's just been, yeah, a lot of talent, and it's been a good process to hear from the residents of Edina, and we really have adjusted it, I think, and have met all those, you know, comments and concerns, and I'm really proud of this document, too. So, it's a big one, but I think it's really, it's already kind of led us in a good direction, and I think it's really going to take us to some exciting places, so. Those are my comments. Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, just general comments. There's a lot of names that are behind, you know, years and years of work. You can open this up and look at it if you know someone, thank them, because they've done an incredible job, super comprehensive, as you could tell. One thing that we didn't really cover today during the summary, but we kind of got a presentation with maybe a couple weeks ago, and that was, just to kind of stress again how different this area is and how unique it is, all the statistics and demographics about it are completely different than everywhere else in the city. And I think we should embrace that, because it is this hub for diversity and a chance to be bold. So I kind of just have general support behind what Commissioner Miranda is saying of, you know, I saw the implementation steps in there, there's a lot of them, but they are general, and, you know, maybe in some areas timid. So I think, I think it warrants itself being a little more bold there, too, just because this is the area of our community that we're so lucky to have, to have this opportunity for some pretty big change. Thanks.
All right, well, is there a motion?
Okay, I will move approval of the Greer-Southdale District Plan, as submitted with two changes, removing Table 4, Spot 11, and Table 4, Spot 12, which is Pages 77 and 78 from the document, which are the existing zoning and existing height overlay districts.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so open up for discussion. Would you be willing for a friendly amendment?
Sure.
To kind of have them review some of the, getting a little stronger with the implementation as recommended by Commissioner? Okay, good. So, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, group. Awesome job. So the second public hearing tonight is the comprehensive plan amendment for 7399, 7410, and 7505 Metro Boulevard.
Okay, thank you, Chair members of the Planning Commission. Before you, we do have a request for a comprehensive plan amendment, which is an amendment to our 2008 plan. As you know, the Met Council has a deadline for submittal for amendments to the 2008 comprehensive plan of December 31 of this year. So this is the last one that you will consider, because we can't anymore. Okay, so the property is located just on the west side of Highway 100 on Metro Boulevard, just north of Edina Industrial Boulevard. The property is highlighted here in red. It's about 12 and a half acres in size. There are two office buildings, and the Primrose Daycare is located on the north side of the site. The south building has been the headquarters for Dairy Queen International, and they will soon be moving that site, vacating it, moving to Bloomington. The property is currently zoned planned office district. The site, in our current comprehensive plan, guides this for office use. So again, it's this pink area here. To the west is the public worksite and the industrial park, and to the south is a neighborhood commercial node. This is that new Starbucks that was built, and the Burger King, and the Shell gas station. What the applicant is proposing is to re-guide those 12 acres to office residential, which would allow residential land use on that site. So the purpose of the request, what the applicant would like to do is remodel that southerly building, this one here, into an affordable housing project, be a little over 130 units. They would also build a market-rate apartment within the existing parking lot, and they're showing, you know, we've talked a lot about introducing sidewalks in this neighborhood, so they're showing the boulevard-style sidewalk along Metro Boulevard, enhancing the green space with another trail along the east side. And for future developments, they've contemplated additional housing, two new buildings, highlighted in the yellow, and then remodeling potentially that north office building into housing. So the request before the Planning Commission is not to talk about the rezoning or the specifics of that project. If the council approves a comprehensive plan amendment based on your recommendation, they would then come back through the process to obtain rezoning. So even re-guiding the site doesn't guarantee that project could happen on that site. They have shown some renderings, this would be that remodeled existing building, and then potentially what that new building could look like in the future. So as we've looked at the pyramid of discretion with the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning in the green, the city has complete discretion whether to say yes or no to this type of request. So again, specifically, it's to re-guide that site from office to office residential that would allow the residential use. So primary issue is the comprehensive plan amendment to allow housing on this site reasonable. Staff in this case is not supportive of the amendment. We've since learned from our engineering staff within the last few weeks that the existing sanitary sewer system that would serve this site is at or near capacity, and may not adequately support turning that site into residential use. Residential land use can be up to three times the amount of sanitary sewer that's needed. So this would, in turning this into a residential site, would significantly increase sanitary sewer needs for that site. This area has not been considered for housing in any of our comprehensive planning efforts over the la, well, ever in the city. So we've never looked at that capacity issue in terms of residential use. To show you an example here, so this is the existing sanitary sewer line that serves the site. So the site that we're looking at is located, Chad's here, too, to back me up on this. So it's located just over here. The sanitary sewer lines come from the Southdale area and travel through the Cornelia neighborhood to serve that site. If this were turned into residential under the current system, there's a potential, there's a potential for backups within this red line. So that red line indicates that it's basically at capacity. So we don't, it could potentially cause some impacts to the existing and potential for sewer backups into homes. So now that this has come to our attention, the city will be studying the capacity issue and what it would mean to upgrade those pipes. But we just, staff believes that it's premature, as we haven't, we haven't considered the site for housing. As you know, as part of the 70th and Cahill Small Area Plan, we've talked about expanding that study area to look at the whole of the industrial park, and that would include this office on the east side of Metro Boulevard. So that study is coming within the next few years, but it just seems premature, especially given our sanitary sewer capacity issues at this time. So with that, staff is recommending denial, subject to the findings that are outlined in the staff report. And Engineering Director Milner is here to talk about any questions you have in regard to that capacity.
Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner South?
Thank you, Carrie. This may be a question for Chad. You specifically talked about issues with sanitary sewer, storm or water, I mean, are those other infrastructure issues? Or is it primarily the sanitary, but, I mean, there's other public utilities? Are they of concern, too?
Thanks, Commissioner. Chad Milner from the Engineering Department. Sanitary is our main concern, as you can see from that, those graphics in your packet. The water system can handle it. Storm sewer, we have issues on almost every property when a commercial development happens, and they do have localized, the 100-year flood shape on this property, that if they did decide to fill that in, they'd have to create storage somehow. Is it on-site, open water, is it tanks, which we typically see? So stormwater is one that happens with every project, but it's really the sanitary sewer issue that's our main concern at this point.
Yeah, there's not much you can do for a fix with sanitary. I mean, you can't keep it on-site, you can't, you've got to move it, and you've got to have the capacity to move it, so.
Yep, nobody wants it in their basement, so we can't use that method either. But yeah, we just haven't studied this. We've focused in the last two or three years on the small area, the areas have changed from the previous comp plan and the current one we're working on. This wasn't identified in any scenario that we knew about, so we didn't study it, we had to finish all the other areas. And it's a land use change, because that's where, in my opinion, it's a trigger now to say no to this from a sanitary sewer standpoint. And we're going to study it in 19, then we'll have numbers and find out ways, how do we solve it? Upsize those pipes, is it parallel pipes? Or is it, there's maybe an option going towards Bloomington, but we have to work with them and Met Council on that, too, so.
Okay, yeah, it is no small thing, so, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, then I'll give you.
Chad, you can come back. So yeah, just the questions I have right now are pretty much for you and maybe Commissioner or Planner Teague. Regarding that study that was, or the memo that was issued by Barr, it looks like it was dated this summer, it didn't include kind of the northern half of that Pentagon Park area, is there a reason for that? Just curious.
Yes, that little portion of Pentagon Park actually flows down Computer Avenue into Bloomington, so that's already covered in the EU AR for that area. Bloomington knows about it, Met Council knows about it, so those flows are covered.
So, I mean, everything in that blue line, it says it's in, you know, Met Council's meter shed, I mean, that's, it doesn't necessarily go to that one on the right-hand side?
Everything, basically, except for Pentagon Park and those few, Seagate, a few of those properties on the south side, but you can see how much, you know, two-thirds of the city all goes to that one meter station next to Ridgefield.
So then, I guess my next question is, you know, regardless of this, I think this is just informative for us and maybe the community. Once you get to the nice visuals where it's showing the existing conditions, and Planner Teague showed it, too, I mean, that stretch is already at or above capacity, meaning everything upstream from that, if there were any changes there, could have similar impacts, correct?
Correct, and that's where we looked at the memo you're referencing, you know, we highlighted four areas of change, Cahill and 70th. Based on the discussions with the small area plan, we feel like with the trend of lower water use from fixtures, our repairs for I&amp;I reductions in our sanitary sewer, the inflow and infiltration, High School Project was done already with some change there, and then the Lincoln Apartments. Those four areas, we feel we can already accommodate to what's planned, because they were planned for already. This is a new, whole new ask tonight of that land use change.
So, yeah, and I guess that was a question of what is that magical threshold if, you know, something else comes to us above and beyond what maybe you guys assumed? You know, I think this had the, you know, 600 total, or maybe 400 new to the 600 total, just out of curiosity, if you can even answer that, or is that part of the study that will help vet that out?
Yeah, part of the study is putting new densities, different levels, low, medium, high, based on what Planner Teague and these areas within this entire green area, but really focus on what hits that pipe through the Cornelia, and see what flows would be generated by those different land use densities, and see in which scenarios we can support, and what we'd have to do to support those densities.
And then I guess my last maybe comment is, just in case people are listening and getting worried about backups, I mean, looking through, you know, flipping through those pages, you know, considering high-density changes in those, you know, planned areas, you know, it really just affects the capacity of those bigger trunk lines versus, you know, you don't see any of the green in the neighborhoods starting to turn yellow or red, so just so people aren't associating this with something else, just wanted to comment on.
Yeah, but it's those main trunk lines, and it's these incremental risks, you know, we're adding just a little risk with every project, and this is a pretty big ask of the system that we just didn't have and studied yet, so.
And right by, right by the bottleneck, so.
Exactly. Do we want to put more risk to the late Cornelia neighborhood is kind of the question, and we're not comfortable with that right now.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner Navarro?
Carrie, Chad, have these concerns been discussed with the applicant, and have they, have they been able to respond what they would like, or maybe they could be participant, maybe they could participate in the solution?
We have talked to them about it. We kind of said we can't support it, but maybe you could talk to some of the other, we got a few big water users in the industrial park, so maybe there's a way to have them recycle their water instead of dumping their wastewater right into the system, because that would free up capacity. I believe that would take a substantial amount of time to have those discussions, because now you're changing their operations, you've got to put new equipment into that facility. So I don't think it met their timeline, and the timeline for the comp plan was a big deadline here, so they are aware of this specific issue.
And to add on to that, so I put in front of each commissioner a letter from the adjacent property owner, which is Film Tech, and they're opposed to it, so that just came through this afternoon.
So clearly, from a technical point, I mean, nobody's going to dispute that anybody wants more sewage, certainly when it's already up to capacity. But from a more planning perspective, I guess this is aimed more at Carrie, I remember, perhaps it was you at some other meeting, said that Edina currently has no Class A office space. And this area zoned office, and we just lost the residence of that building. Is there, does the city have any concerns that we'll have office ghettos or something in the future, that we just have land that won't be redeveloped if it's just office?
Yeah, so the concern would be, with this amendment, we're not precluding an office from going on that site, even if it's re-guided to office residential, both those uses would be allowed. That said, given the housing market that it is today and the office market that is today, I don't see office being developed on that, a new office developing on that site. But that would be a concern, is you're taking your, you know, land that's only available for office and now opening it up for residential. So it could be a loss in even the office buildings that are there today.
Any other questions? I guess I have a quick one, sorry, you always keep trying to sit down. What was my question? So this Barr report, is this, how many of these trunk lines do we have in the city, or is this it?
This is for that two-thirds of town. We also have a trunk line that follows basically the Minnehaw Creek, Minnehaw Creek, and we have another meter station, we have three meter stations out in the Met Council system. So one more trunk line that we do is mostly follow, it basically follows both creeks, Naimon Creek and Minnehaw Creek, because that's the lowest part in the geography, and that's so everything flows downhill into those areas, and then the trunk pipes take it to the appropriate meter stations at the borders with the Met Council.
Right, so I think this is kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Bennett's question, and you might not have the answer until you do the study, but if... you might not have the answer until you do the study, but if the proposal had been for more concentrated office, I mean, would we be having the same discussion? Is it really just the number of hous, is it housing?
Yeah, I think if it got to be concentrated, we would have the discussion, but it's not the big, as big of a water use at that point.
Okay.
And we just haven't seen applications here for any kind of redevelopment, you know, and it hasn't been called as an area of change. So, knowing we do have one now, we're going to study it in '19 and have some of those answers.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak?
Do you have a presentation to?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Perry Ryan with Lake West Development. We're at 14525, Highway 7, Minnetonka, just down the road. That's the, oh, there's the overhead, thank you. I thought it was going to pop up here. I just want to, as, as we don't, know most of you, I know we've worked with Mr. Teague, just wanted to give a 10-second intro to Lake West. We're located right at 7 and 494. We've been developing property since about 1994. We've got 57 developments in about 18 cities, so I just wanted to give you a quick introduction to us for those of you that don't know us. I'm going to show, hand that out, Steve. I'm going to show just a, a very slightly modified site plan, and my colleague, Mr. Egbert, who's in our kind of a planning department at Lake West, is going to hand these out. The only difference on this from what's in your packet is we showed a phasing line on here, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about phasing, and so I think it might be important just for you to have a copy of that. So, so with that, I'd like to present our project. So, question I have for you all. Did you know the city of Adina has nearly 21,000 housing units? You probably know that. But according to the city's affordable housing webpage, only 326 of those units are classified as affordable. That means out of all the city workers, the schoolteachers, the police force, service workers and others, only 326 family units are fortunate enough to obtain affordable housing in Adina. That's 1.6% of the total housing in the city. We're hopeful to be part of that solution with providing 151 new units of affordable housing just within Phase 1 of our project. That's nearly a 46% increase in affordable units within the city. Allow me to present our project. As Mr. Teague pointed out, the project is 12 and 1/4 acres north of 77th and west of Highway 100. So why are we here? Why this, why this property? Why are we looking at this for affordable housing? After nearly 20 years, as Mr. Teague pointed out, International Dairy Queen is moving out of their corporate headquarters, which will leave the 110,000 square foot building without a major tenant and about 50, only a little under 50% occupied. With the current excess office space, again, Mr. Teague discussed, in Adina and Strounding area, provides an excellent opportunity to redevelop the area and create a live-work node. It's one of the current goals in mapping Adina's big ideas, as you're familiar with, and also meet a goal of the Adina's newly developed Affordable Housing Development Office. Phase 1 is shown on here would be everything south of the white line. It includes the redevelopment of the existing building to include 136 affordable units. It includes a new building, shown as Building D, for 150 units, of which all of the new buildings, we have proposed to meet the 10% component of affordable housing as well, so you've got 15 additional affordable housing units in there. And then market rate apartments along, shown on the other buildings as Building B and E. All the buildings would share common amenities. We've got a 20-foot wide pedestrian boardwalk area on the west side, which becomes part of the future greenway and parkway concept, which we're going to talk about a little bit on your 2018 plan. Nature trail along the east side, passive landscape and hardscape areas and dog park areas, a todd lot in green areas between the proposed building for sitting and contemplation. Future trail connection along Nine Mile Creek, and, and we're proposing a future connection all the way up to the Nine Mile Creek Trail and the bridge that crosses over Highway 100 to the Fred Richards Park, which was discussed in a previous presentation. On the west side of the renovated building, we're proposing a restaurant or brewery of sorts with patio and outdoor seating. And one of the benefits, obviously, on the property as well, as, as some have called it in its current state, a sea of asphalt, there's great environmental benefits and positives on removing considerable hard surface on the overall parcel and replacing with green areas. Affordable housing needs, we took a look at the city's website. According to the website, the city recognizes the need to provide affordable housing in order to create and maintain a diverse population and housing for those who live or work in Adina. Since the remaining land in the city appropriated for new development is limited, it's essential to be, that a reasonable portion of such land like this be developed as affordable housing units. I mentioned the, the numbers according to the city's website and, and what this project would do in increasing those affordable units. The Met Council has said by 2030, which is just a little over 11 years away, by the way, hard to imagine, the city of Adina has to create 848 new units of affordable housing. This project will create 151 new affordable units, which is a 48, 6% increase in the city. As you know, the median home price in Adina is now a staggering $560,000. Most workforce professionals cannot afford to live in the city. The project's affordable housing component, as well as the marketplace apartments, will be another step towards a solution. Under the, sorry about that, this, this document, excuse me, is a, a vertical document. This document is out of the, the 2008 Comp Plan Update, Chapter 4, Land Use and Community Design. I know it was talked about tonight that, that this, this area was never looked at as a, a potential area of change. This is out of that, that document, again, Chapter 4, it's labeled conceptual land use framework, potential areas of change. It does show the 70, 77th and Cahill Project, as well as our subject property within Zone 5 there. So it has been contemplated, it has been labeled as a potential area for change, and so it's interesting as we talk about that and we talk about the sewer needs of the project. The 2018 Comp Plan Update Vision, the mapping of Adina's big ideas, this document, page 18, out of that 2018 document, the land use analysis diagram, Exhibit F of this report, depicts this future parkway grand rounds going through the, going through the city, and it goes right, of course, by the subject property, and we'll, we'll go back to the site line and show how that kind of ties in with what we're planning for our boardwalk area. A desired location for a node that complements the general area, the parkway kind of forms a ring around the city and a ring within each quadrant linking the recreation destinations. We talked earlier about pedestrian, the, the previous Outdale project talked about bicycle and transit nodes and future development. Mr. Teague's staff report, I wanted to thank the staff. They've, they've done, they've been very helpful, done a nice job. I know in his presentation tonight, he, he pointed out, one of the things we liked about the staff report is, is he showed kind of two ways on, on how you could either deny it or approve it. Tonight, he talked about the couple ways, a couple supporting statements of why to deny it. I'm going to go through both of them, if you don't mind. Really, on the denial one, which are the cons of the project, there were, there were four listed in the staff report, but there's really only two. There's the sanitary sewer issue, and then kind of the need for the Small Area Plan, kind of suggesting we should, we should stop and study this. Regarding the sanitary sewer, as I said, Phase 1 of the project is, is proposing 136 units in the renovated, renovated building and 150 new units for a total of 286. That equates to approximately 500 people. As you know, the, the 2017 population of Adina is about 52,000. That, that represents a 0.1% increase in population in the city, which is quite infinitesimal. Also, on the, on the property, as you know, there's currently 110,000 square foot building on there. I think from the, the stuff that we looked at the Met Council, there is an increased use in water use for residential versus office. I think it's about a twofold use, somewhat confirmed with city staff that, that we talked about, but we can certainly look at those issues. The, the, the property also would support possibly another office building as well, although with the, with, with where we're at on the, on the office use, we're not sure that we would do that. But we think the net increase in it certainly isn't the 500 people, we think it's about half of that, and so it's a pretty infinitesimal increase. One of the things that Mr. Teague's report said regarding the existing sanitary sewers, he said the, the existing sanitary system may not adequately support the project. It wasn't conclusive, and, and we don't believe that the, the memo that BAR Engineering put together is conclusive either. In fact, if, if you've read the BAR Engineering Report, I'm going to put up the last page of it. The last page of it, it talks about possible areas of concern. If you read it, and I know that might be hard to see for everybody, but if you read it, it's, it's not, it's not very alarming. It talks about possible areas of concerns and, and pipes increasing from 50% capacity up to 80% capacity. Certainly, their models talk about going over capacity, but it really, it really doesn't, it, it's not conclusive, and, and if you read the conclusions, I would, I would have to classify their conclusions as not alarming. But you can certainly read that for yourself as well. His, Mr. Teague's other comment in there about not approving, talked about a Small Area Plan, and so I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about the 70th and Cahill. We looked at that project by comparison, the 70th and Cahill project is 19 acres. In that, in the write-up of that Small Area Plan, they talk about densities up to 50 units per acre. One of the, one of the goals underneath, in that Small Area Plan, under 3.3 under the goals, it says the city will utilize future infrastructure improvement opportunities to incorporate additional street and walking connections to Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail. What I was surprised to see in that entire Small Area Plan, and I think I was reading the, the latest one, October 31st, 2018, I didn't see any mention in there about sanitary sewer. There was no mention in there in infrastructure that there was any short, shortsightedness or short, you know, shortage of sanitary sewer capacity. Certainly, again, we're coming back to kind of the infinitesimal increase that we're talking about, and yet it wasn't even talked about in the 77th and Cahill project. One of the things that this document, that we did take out of there was, it talked about, their Small Area Plan talked about employment concentration. As part of the guiding principle under housing under that Small Area Plan, it made two points. It said, provide opportunities for people who work in Adina to live in Adina. And then it also said, housing options to comply and support with the city of Adina's affordable housing policy. And so it's interesting, is it not? This is, again, out of the Small Area Plan, that the highest concentration was right, not quite centered around our site, but, but certainly close to that, and then, of course, the Southdale area as well. Mr. Teague's points of approval that we want to talk about, there were six points of approval, which we thought were great. We thought it supported the project quite well. Certainly, I think one of the asks from a planning standpoint, is this a good idea? And just to, to summarize, it talked about the positives of the location of our project, the support of higher densities in this area, the, certainly the affordability component being a positive of our project, and the positive aspects regarding traffic generation. What we would ask is to approve the comp plan amendment that we're talking about for the project, and be allowed to move forward with Phase 1, which is really the smaller portion of it, on adding those units. Again, we believe it's infinitesimal, and that the BAR Engineering Report is not conclusive regarding that. Some of it is modeled, we'd like some actual rates, and that we would agree to not move forward with the future phases of this until that Small Area Plan is completed and implementing some of those changes, if, if in fact they are required for the sanitary sewer. So with that, we believe, number one, the project, it's a unique opportunity to avoid, to, to implement that really extreme high rate of affordable housing with going with 100% on that first building. So it'll not only create that much-needed housing for Adina, but also create market rate apartments for the heart of the workforce needs in Adina, and it, we believe it meets the visioning laid out above for the city of Adina. So with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Other questions for the applicant? Questions?
So, thank you very much for that presentation. I had a couple of questions. That's why I raised my hand, and I'm having the mic now. So, first, transit. One of the things that's generally considered for affordable housing that is, is that it be located near transit facilities. Are there, is there transit near here, or how would you address it if it, if there isn't?
I believe that the Metro Boulevard, there is a transit route on that, maybe Mr., I know when we met with Mr. Teague, we talked about it, and I didn't get it labeled on here, so he may be able to, to answer that a little bit better.
I believe there is a line that runs through there. Chad might be able to expand on it. I, I know it's not an extensive bus service that comes through there.
Yeah, I don't know the extent of it, but yeah, there's a bus stop right across the street, right on the corner there.
Oh, okay.
Right there, and then one down by the Burger King coffee shop areas.
Okay, I, I worked over there about 15 years ago, and I just don't remember buses, but 15 years ago.
There's metro transit buses that go through the industrial park. The amount of that service are all frequent, I can't speak to that.
Okay, all right, and then, thank you. And then my second question gets back to the, to the crown jeweled topic of the hour, manure. And that is, you know, you, we've heard cities' comments regarding sewage capacity, sewer capacity, and, and your comments regarding sewer capacity. Listening to you, I was wondering if you'd be willing to do another study that might put finer numbers on the, the extent of capacity now and an, and estimate of the increase in usage that your property would create?
We'd certainly be happy to, to work with staff. In honesty, we did, we did meet with, with Chad and Carrie, and then I talked with one of the staff members yesterday morning as well. We'd love to work with them on it. Again, our point is that we think this is a unique opportunity for this project. We really don't want to hold up this project, and we think that it's, it's, it's an extremely minor amount of increase in flow for the number of units we're talking about in Phase 1. And I, I know that the city does inflow and infiltration projects every year. I know that was a, a reason stated that they felt comfortable with the Cahill project. However, when you talk to staff, there's not, there's not real numbers supporting that, or at least we couldn't get them, and they might be there in, in their defense. We just think that they're very similar numbers. And so I don't, I don't know that it should hold the project up. We, we would really desire to work with staff on looking at what those exact numbers are. And, and as I said, we'd like to at least continue to move forward. We think that we would, we'd certainly be willing to certainly wait on future phases of this project until those are implemented.
I was just thinking that for the first phase, that if, if there were finer numbers, that could give people a lot more comfort to say yes, because, because I, I personally, and I suspect others, recognize all, many of the benefits that you presented. I think you, I think you did a nice job of presenting the benefits to the community of the development. But I think everybody also worries that, you know, they don't want to be walking through the escape from the Shawshank prison either.
Well, you know, and I think as Mr.
If we had more comfort on that.
Yeah, as Mr. Teague pointed out, too, we've, we've still got to go through the rezoning of it, and so, yeah, we'd, we'd be willing to work with staff to look at those finer details, for sure.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
So, has your company done developments like this in other cities where it's something outside the realm of what's already in the land use plan? And if so, have you done anything where you might have contributed to increasing sewage capacity or some other infrastructure?
We've done quite a few that requires a, a guideline change and land use change, yes. We've, we, I don't believe we've been in a, in a situation where it's doing something with the capacity. Again, we're, I'm, I'm, my background is engineering, I, I am a registered engineer, and so it's, it's, it's intriguing to me, and that's why I to me, and that's why I would love to see the detail as well, quite honestly, that, number one, the Bar Engineering report is not alarming, if you read the conclusions. And, number two, again, I think the infinitesimal increase, it's surprising to me. This area was identified in 2008 as a potential land use change, that that wasn't looked at. So, no, we haven't been in this situation where we're increasing it to the point where the city says, "Hey, we don't have capacity." That's very unique.
Great. I think that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
Thank you, Chair Olson. Commissioners, my name is Jacob Steen with Larkin Hoffman Attorneys. Address is 8300 Norman Center Drive. And we represent Kin Properties, the owner of the Film Tech Building at 7600 Metro Boulevard. I'll keep my comments short, as staff has done a good job of analyzing this project. And frankly, it's our opinion that this application is simply premature and inappropriate at this time. The sanitary sewer capacity issue is alarming to my client, and it should be alarming to this body. I understand that the city engineer indicated it is an incremental change, or an incremental risk, but it's a significant risk, and not only to the 600 new residential units, but the potentially thousands of residents, homeowners, and business owners within the community. And for those reasons, we think that is premature. Further, as this body knows more than anyone, you're currently going through your decennial comp plan update. And this is a very deliberate and thoughtful process that you've spent more than a year on. And, in fact, there's two small area plans on your agenda tonight. And this very much feels like a piecemeal planning process and an ill-time planning process. And we think that, given staff's comments, that a longer-term plan for a study of this area, this office park and industrial park, we think this is very piecemeal. And lastly, something that didn't come up in the staff report, but is a major concern to our client, is traffic in this area. And we're not just talking about vehicle traffic, but really pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic, as well as the vehicle traffic that comes with 600 residential units. It's more than 1,000 individual people. And this street grid in this office and business park is designed for office and business. And there are very limited, if any, pedestrian improvements. And I'm talking about the kind of pedestrian improvements that minimize conflicts between the existing traffic. And if you've ever been on Metro Boulevard in the morning or in the afternoon during rush hour, you know that this can be a pretty heavily congested area. And right now, we don't have the improvements that we need to make pedestrians and drivers and bicyclists safe, because these people are going to be walking to the stores, walking to the parks, walking to your trails. And this application is significant, and not just for this property, but for the entire area. And we believe that it warrants and deserves a very thoughtful and deliberate process. And for that reason, we ask that you recommend denial.
Thank you.
My name is Nora Davis. I live at 6921 Southdale Road, and I represent the Lake Cornelia Neighborhood Association. The thought of sewage backing up into our basements is not a comfortable situation. I don't know if you've ever had to clean up anything like that. I would want your personal cell phone number and all your staff people to come in and clean it up, and then reimburse us for the damages. I just can't believe that you're even saying that. You don't think it's a... If Chad is telling you it's an issue, pay attention to him. That's what he does. But I just, I can't believe it. The thought, I mean, eight feet of water was bad enough, had no sewage at that time, but the damage still exists today, and that was over 30 years ago. And now we're talking sewage? I just, I can't believe it. My second comment is about numbers of affordable housing. The city of Edina does not have a good handle on how much affordable housing is here. There's no licensure. I go past duplexes on France Avenue and Valley View and Xerxes. No one knows a thing about them. So I think we have to be careful about using the number of affordable units that are here in Edina. And, you know, when they're talking $500,000, there are a lot of houses in Edina that are less than $500,000. So I think we need to be careful, and we need to be honest with people about that. But the sewage, that took the cake. I'm sorry.
Okay. Is anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hello. My name is John Steckman. I live at 7460 Shannon Drive, not too far from Metro Boulevard. Drive by there quite often. And I'd like to, I agree with the staff. I appreciate the opposition to the addendum. I saw this for the first time in the Minneapolis Star Journal, what is it, Minneapolis-St. Paul Business Journal yesterday, and it's the first I had seen it. Just want to make one quick question about density, because that is my bigger concern. And I know all these relate to it. I think any existing residential, commercial property owner can make the same case. Let's put housing in. I think it's a responsibility of this committee to take that very serious. And really, whether it's Southdale or 70th and Cahill or this property, it really is all about the same thing. And when people I talk to talk about what's great about Edina, other than the wonderful leadership and community involvement, I mean, it's the location, and nobody really can take credit for that, but it's close to the Twin Cities and the downtown. But it's the schools. I mean, that is a really huge thing that people come here for. And if you look at the last few years, very few communities can say they can do what Edina can do. I mean, look at the referendums. I mean, they passed a $125 million referendum. Most communities would turn that down. And I don't know the stats, so please forgive me, but I'm going to be conservative. 70% of the households in Edina don't have kids in the program. Of those people, 70 to 80% vote to increase the referendum to pay for the schools. And they do it, it's selfish to maintain their property value. What density brings is non-ownership density, is why, if I'm an apartment owner, would I vote for higher taxes on myself or in general? So I think that's something to really consider. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, good.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. So bringing it back to the Planning Commission for discussion. Commissioner Hamilton?
Couple of things. First, thank you for bringing something clearly in a sketch plan sort of way instead of a finished document, so we actually can talk about it instead of not being able to talk about it and have a more finished piece that we have to wrestle with. Thank you, too, to Himple Development. They have a quality track record. They've done excellent work around the cities for years. Thank you for your thoughts on the site, the bike connection, the walkability, and the affordability. I think your arguments were very pervasive, are very thoughtful and well-considered. The issue for me is this is an island. It isn't related to a community. It isn't part of a neighborhood. It takes multifamily housing and puts it down as a creature apart from the city instead of part of the city, as apart from the neighborhoods instead of part of the neighborhoods. It doesn't create good places for people to live, I don't believe, when it's isolated as this would be. And for that reason, it won't have my support.
Any other comments?
You know, I think we learned with the Southdale process that sometimes giving some considerate thought to transformation of kind of key parts of our city, and I would argue the industrial-commercial part of Edina is actually the secret engine of this city, is important. And you get good results, even though it takes time. And I think this flies in kind of very contrary to that of, let's try and get something in under a deadline that really is a complete, about-face from the way we've envisioned, you know, that part of the city growing. So to me, and echoing John's comments, if you're a resident there, you're not going to walk anywhere. You have a nice boardwalk, but it doesn't go anywhere. And until you get the whole synergy of what's supposed to happen, it's a very suburban project just splashed on the side of a highway, as John said, is in complete isolation. So maybe at some point in time, you know, redevelopment in office residential might make sense. But I think we need to get, there's a city in a thoughtful way as opposed to just reacting, because this is a fundamental re-envisioning of how we're looking at our commercial districts.
Yeah, I think the one word that captures the problem with this is premature. It's just, it's exactly, that's, I like the plan. It's sort of, maybe, let's certainly study. And it does seem to have, you know, the possibilities, but I could not get past a staff position that, you know, this is at capacity. That's nothing to dismiss without really sound engineering behind it. So, I mean, what is it? Let's get some specific information and have that before us, before we would approve something on the hope of the outcome of a report. No, I think, let's see the report. Let's see the study. Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm very conflicted with this one, because on the one hand, we do have a dearth of affordable housing in the city, and this would address some of that in kind of a big way. It is near the Nine Mile Creek Trail, and it is on bus lines, although I think they're mostly express, you know, bus lines, not day-to-day bus lines. And things are, you know, 70th and Cahill will redevelop, and, you know, there's the brewery, which is just a hop, skip, and a jump away from there. And actually, they're going to have their own brewery supposedly here. But, you know, so I think there's a lot to recommend it in that sense. But I guess I agree with my other commissioners that if we had a plan for the area that sort of allowed that all to, allowed this to integrate into, I think it would make a lot more sense. I do agree it is sort of this little wedge in the middle of nowhere, bounded on one side by, you know, a major highway. So the only way people can go would be south or west or north, and west is all industrial. So, while I think there are a lot of good attributes about this project, I think it's, you know, we're a planning commission, and we should plan, and this is sort of not really planned.
Commissioner Booby, did you have something?
I agree with the comments of my other commissioners, that in general, there are things to like about this. Within the site, the connectivity is good, but there's nothing really to connect it to today. But to plan for that is great. The affordable housing piece is great. You know, the landscaping looks nice. But we can't go forward with the comments about the sewer. I mean, I don't think in any right form of thinking we could approve this. So I would not support it.
I guess I got my hand up first. I think, like Pointer Teague said, you know, we're not really to consider the details of the project specifically with how that, you know, changes or might support our decision. But seeing it is helpful to imagine what something could be. And I think what they did is very creative and, you know, addresses every single report, the vision, the big map, you know, the big ideas workshop, all these small area plans, and the last comp plan. So, I mean, I commend the super thoughtful planning effort that went into trying to get this to fit with all that. Unfortunately, I do also feel like it's premature. That's a great word. It's a lot to react to. Just looking at this specifically, there's a lot to like. I still feel like there's way too much surface-level parking, and, you know, you have a nature thing aside a noisy freeway, so there's some contradiction there. But just all in all, I don't feel at this point, this belongs, this type of development belongs in that area. And that's the bigger picture we're to look at. And Commissioner Thorson hit on it. This is an office-industrial area. Maybe this can start going toward that, but we haven't ever considered that. So just jumping to that conclusion right now is premature. And regarding the staff report with the sanitary issue, I don't know if that would be something that should prevent us from the comprehensive plan amendment, but I think it's, you know, at least this was good to get them to study this, because what it showed was that last memo says we're currently at or above capacity, and that will surely affect other developments upstream. So I kind of echo a lot of the same sentiment of fellow commissioners. Thanks.
Well, a lot of comments, a lot of good analysis. I'm kind of mixed on this one, like Commissioner Miranda, but I probably echo many comments here. I want to address a few of them. First of all, for the premature issue, I don't really have as much of an issue for that, because it seems like we've approved other projects that came in before planning was done. And in fact, we would have people stand up and say, "Hey, you're going to do a small area plan. Don't do anything until the small area plan is completed." But we did, and we approved projects. So we didn't, you know, I don't know if we did a comp plan amendment for those or not, but we've done it before. It's okay, you know. The sanitary sewer, I think when our Director of Engineering stands up and says that there's a problem, I think that we have to take that very seriously. So I wouldn't move forward unless the applicant could bring better numbers. You know, I think there's a strong rebuttable presumption when the Director of Engineering says we have a problem that, you know, I think that can be overcome, but it's a hurdle. It's more than just someone else's opinion. I'm going to defer to the Director of Engineering. Now, regarding some of the other issues, I think this project is an improvement over what's there today. I think it meets a lot of our city needs. I think that we're potentially at the, we're looking at an empty six-story office building in the not-too-distant future. I'm not sure what the future for that building is, but we know the maintenance walking out, and that's not going to be good either. And this is an improvement. It, I do share Commissioner Hamilton's concern about putting affordable housing in one island location. That is not preferable. But it is also not preferable to not be hitting our numbers that we're trying to meet. And my guess is that many residents would prefer this location than other locations in the city that we, you know, that we're putting in affordable housing. It's going to be a challenge no matter where we put it, and there's going to be some flaw in it. And I think I'd be okay with putting this here. However, I can't get ahead, I can't go forward without better numbers on the sanitary sewer. It just, that clearly rebut the presumption from our Director of Engineering.
Well, I always come at the end, and I agree with the comments that were made. This is a tough one, because it is, I really do like this project. I just don't know that this is the right location. I also think that we have approved projects before without the small area plans being completed. So that's not a problem I have. I just don't know that this is the right site for the housing, and without looking at the big picture, the whole area. So I don't, I can't remember, but I know that I was definitely a proponent to study this area sooner than, you know, waiting two years or whatever. But, so I think that's just showing that we're starting to see demand for redeveloping in the area. And I think that we should, you know, try to, you know, look at this area cohesively, kind of like what we did with the Southdale area, so we can react to this better. As far as the sanitary sewer, you know, I agree. I don't want to develop something that would put us over capacity. But when I read that Bar Engineering memo, which is from August of 2018, but their conclusion and recommendation specifically lists- from August of 2018, but their conclusion and recommendations specifically lists Lincoln Apartments and the Cahill 70th redevelopment as cause of the greatest reduction in capacity. So that's where I'm kind of thinking, we're kind of dumping it all on this, but it seems like we have, you know, bigger issues along the line. So I can't really support this either at this time, the comp plan amendment. Again, I think that this is a great plan, I just think that we need to find a better, you know, where it's more appropriate location in the city, I'm sorry I can't see you. So those are my comments. Is there a motion?
I move for denial of the comprehensive plan amendment, subject to the findings, including the staff memo, under denial.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So, denial was recommended.
So Carrie, does this go to the City Council then?
Yes, sorry, yeah, this will go to the City Council next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, our next public hearing before you is for a number of variances at 4412 Valleyview Road for New Horizon. So this site is located in the Valleyview-Wooddale area, specifically on Kellogg and Valleyview. It's where the neighborhood ice cream shop was located, there was a dry cleaner in front of it. Property is currently zoned plan commercial district, PCD-1, it's the area highlighted in red here. Site is guided, or the height overlay district is two stories and 24 feet, suggested for two stories in the Valleyview-Wooddale small area plan. What the applicant would like to do is remodel that existing structure for the preschool. What they would like to do is, in that remodel, create outdoor play areas on the roof, so in two locations, on the two-story portion and the one-story portion. In providing that rooftop play area, building code says you need to get an elevator up to that area, so the elevator exceeds our height requirement, it's 42 feet, I believe my staff report says 41, but it's 42 feet in height, so that's one of the variances. Also, the existing building is about five feet from the property line to the north, so it's non-conforming. So that's, that addition of the elevator, which is this dark area, also needs a variance, and as well as to the east property line in that location there. Whoops. So this is an example of, well, it's the current structure, and then the proposed structure. So as you see, what they're proposing is to take the roof off the existing structure and turn it into a flat roof for that play area, and the same over the old, the dry cleaners' area, that would also be a rooftop play area. The applicant did go through sketch plan review through the planning commission, this is a look at the plan that you all looked at, oh, maybe a couple months ago. So you can see that elevator and the outdoor play areas. Based on the feedback that you all provided, they've made a number of changes, specifically this elevator area, they've turned that into a pitched roof, that's the reason for the increase in height, to blend into the residential area. And the other, well, a couple others significant, they've relocated the stairs to the front to provide that more main entrance, and they've, another comment was, you asked them to turn the architecture to have it match that new, the Edina Flats that's being constructed both to the east and to the west. So those are really the three main things that they've changed. So this graphic here on the top, this is what those new buildings that are currently under construction will look like, and so they've tried to match that architecture more in the colors and somewhat in the material, so you can see they've turned the elevator to a pitched roof. They've eliminated the blue on the top, again, to match some of those colors. So just to quickly move around the building, so you'll see on the top what the building looks like currently, and then the proposed. You can see that stairwell entrance off the street. So again, the variances that are requested, the front setback, that stairwell needs a setback of 34 feet, 35 is the requirement. I mentioned the north and the east lot lines for that elevator override, the building height going from two stories up to 42 feet, and also in regard to parking, based on the number of students and staff, there are 27 parking stalls are required, and they're providing 22. So those are the variances requested. So primary issue for consideration of the planning commission is, are those variances reasonable, and do they meet our variance criteria? Staff believes, in this case, the variances are reasonable, and it does meet our criteria. First, want to point out that the applicant could just simply remodel the existing building and move in there today. It's providing some of those amenities for the kids, the rooftop, that's causing the need for some of the variances. So they're trying to work within the existing building, but they do need some variances in order to do that, to provide better service and outdoor space for the children attending the site. A traffic study was done by the Traffic Impact Group. Scott Israelson is here to answer any questions that you might have. The study concludes that the existing roadways can support the daycare there, and that the proposed parking would support the project. So the way that the pickup drop-off, it happens sporadically, so the 22 spaces primarily for staff, the parking study indicated that really the maximum that they anticipate would be about 10, 12 parking spaces full at one time, so the 22 spaces that are provided should more than adequately serve the site. We believe that the variance criteria is met, practical difficulty is the small size of the lot, and again, trying to work with the existing building. I mentioned the existing non-conformities, and we believe that it would be an improvement over existing conditions. So right now, the site is really entirely paved, it's all hard surface, they are providing green space out front with the pedestrian, a better pedestrian sidewalk along Valleyview with the boulevard, grass separating the sidewalk, better connection to the building, again, moving that more prominent entrance to the front. They'd be providing additional landscaping along the west lot line as well. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the variances, subject to the findings and conditions in your staff report, and with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions?
I believe there's a parking easement to the adjoining building that somewhat complicates the parking situation?
It does, yes, good point. So that's right in this area here, the home to the east accesses their garage through this lot. Maybe it shows better in aerial photograph? Oh, it's difficult to see, but it's back in that location there. So yes, there is an easement over the site that provides access to that home, so that's another one of the, could add that to the practical difficulties that they're trying to work with here.
Go ahead.
So if I understand correctly, there are only two extra spots for non-staff in terms of parking, so are there any other parking spaces available around the location, or if there are more than two people who aren't staff who have to park, will they simply not have options?
Well, the parking study concludes that there really wouldn't be a need for over 12 stalls during the peak times, so there should be, and that's really primarily staff. The additional spaces would be the pickup drop-offs that are taking place. So really, the study concludes, based on how they're using the site, there shouldn't be any need to, for people coming to the site or the employees to park off-site along the streets, it should all be able to be accommodated within the parking that's proposed here.
Carrie, were there any submittals from the neighbors or the neighborhood, or any public?
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, I remember the last time I threw here, I think they were pretty receptive, so, but there's been no reaction beyond that. Okay, thank you.
The traffic report also had some recommended improvements to the intersection at Wooddale Valleyview, is there any updates on that or consideration?
I don't know that one off the top of my head.
Just curious.
Chad's already left, because I know there are some scheduled improvements in that area, but I don't know the timing.
Yeah, it seemed to not impact this necessarily, but someone's would improve at least the access of the site, because there could be some queuing, so just wanted to hear.
Carrie, so one of the issues with this project is the variance on the height. How far back from the street does the height that's going to be subject to the variance commence?
Yeah, maybe this graphic shows. So I would estimate the setback, so here's the, where the height is located on, I would estimate it's about 50 feet back, maybe 60.
How about from Kellogg? About the same?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say about the same.
Okay. And then on traffic, I, it was a different traffic report than I'm used to, I struggled about with a couple things. How much was estimated that people would turn right out of the site and go north on Kellogg?
Yeah, perhaps we could have the consultant come up and go through the study.
That sounds good, whenever that works for you.
Did you want to do that now? Sure.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Israelson with Traffic Impact Group, 7900 International Drive in Bloomington. We performed the traffic and parking study, and let me go ahead and address the comment on about Kellogg. That was one of the roadways we looked at. One of the great things about this project is you have an existing facility, so you have an existing facility that's just moving. So staff driving behavior is going to be the same, and parent driving behavior is going to be the same. So really, it's a fairly easy way to go through and kind of predict what's going to happen, and maybe just extrapolate for the increase in children. So when we look at Kellogg, we took a look at what would be expected, and I'm going to go ahead and put this on the overhead, we took a look at what we call trip distribution, and that's just primarily the traffic patterns in and out of the site. And as you would expect, the majority of trips are heading east and west along Valleyview Road. Your question was about Kellogg Avenue, how many trips would be going to and from Kellogg? We estimate that to be about 2% of the total, so, again, very light impacts to the neighborhoods around there. Most of your new traffic will be along Valleyview Road, and then along some up on Wooddale Avenue, too. Yes, sir?
But the backing movement coming out of that linear parking lot onto Kellogg Avenue, I'm certain that you couldn't have seen that and not thought about it. Do you predict much difficulty with that?
Yeah, I did see it. Fortunately, Kellogg Avenue is not a highly traveled roadway as opposed to Wooddale Avenue. Wooddale, you have much more traffic than along Kellogg. There's going to be some cars backing in and out of there, but again, as far as the number of vehicles making that maneuver, it's not going to be, in terms of numbers, a very large impact.
So was all this study done through software, or did anyone go to the site or the roads nearby and visit them?
Yeah, absolutely. I was onsite, I took a look at it during rush hour in September when we performed the site. We took into account Edina Flats' traffic, there is a traffic study done for that project. We took those trips on top of new students that would be traveling here, and then there was a study done by SRF, I think, and that study was the one that recommended a traffic signal at Valleyview and Wooddale. So, yeah, we, and then, of course, we take those new numbers, and we do put them through into the software model to come up with level of service.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the bicycle and pedestrian facilities section, and it says, currently there are no pedestrian or bicycle facilities in place along West 62nd Street, and then it goes on, talks about the proposed reconstruction of 62nd Street, and that's finished, and I think it's been finished for most of the summer.
Okay.
So there actually is, that's actually done now.
So that's in place?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sir.
Just props on doing the traffic count when it matters. A lot of times, we get ones during the winter or during the summer when school's not a factor, so thanks for making it more appropriate.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is the applicant here, would they like to speak?
Vicki Heskey, on behalf of Ryler Architects for the project. I would just like to kind of maybe outline how we are addressing the small area plan as well, and fitting these elements in. So as the traffic study reviewed, we are looking at essentially fitting 22 stalls on the property while enhancing green space, which currently it has virtually none, other than a four-and-a-half-foot strip on the north side. So that's been a little bit of a challenge, enhancing one part, giving up a few parking stalls. But to speak to the 22 stalls, traffic-wise, as it was studied, does appear to be adequate, and statistically average, a daycare isn't full to full capacity, so 63% generally is a working number as far as children enrolled. So start times for employees also staggers throughout the day, so again, addressing that question, does that only leave two stalls for drop-off? It does not, staff does vary on start times, some do bicycle in per se, car share, that sort of thing. Currently, there is a New Horizon literally across the street, so statistics, again, have been for that neighborhood in place as a real gauge as far as what is a viable number, and there is no concern from the applicant on the 22 stalls. So we do feel that that is a good number and adequate, so matching the traffic study. Just to talk a little bit to, again, the small area plan, we are looking to do the rooftop play yards, which is an exciting space for children, a good gathering space, some vibrancy to the property. We are also doing Boulevard along Valleyview Road, so addressing kind of that connectivity, that walkability, as well as two bike stalls that are currently not offered on the property. Ideally, those would be a little closer to the front door, however, again, to maintain However, again, to maintain our main walkway along Kellogg Parking, along the building, the sidewalk along the building, that serves best as a sidewalk and not a bike parking space. So we have put those more to the easterly side of the property as far as the parking area, but kind of basically in the middle of the property itself. So that is good to allot those for, again, the walkability and community feel for the Taking a look at the elevators, the third story essentially of the elevator portion of the building, I did kind of look at that number. It is approximately 70 to, or 80 to 90 feet off of literally the Kellogg property line. So it is essentially pushed back to the quiet corner of the property, which does abut residential neighbors. From our previous exterior, we did try to conform that to address the neighbors in more of a residential look. It's now a kind of a Dutch hip roof that does peak at 42 feet. In the small area plan, I believe that the height restriction is 36. So that being a difference from the 42 is essentially a six-foot difference. And especially when you look at the grade on those two sides of the building, the north corner and the east, essentially the main floor of the existing building is bermed up and below grade for the most part of it. So the Kellogg Street grade is not throughout the site. So that taller portion is literally on the higher grade side. And again, as I mentioned, this business service literally is currently across the street, is a great fit for the neighborhood and well-receptive. So exciting to be able to essentially upgrade their facility while still keeping their service going across the street. To remodel this without, you know, demoing the entire project and repurposing kind of what's there and enhancing it. So landscape-wise, quite exciting if you ask me right now. Again, like I said, there is nothing there, so we are looking at infiltration type basin on the Kellogg and Valley View corner near the outdoor stairwell, offering some trees across that Boulevard that is currently not there with buffer of grass between those amenities of street and Boulevard. And shielding parking from the east property, again, too, with some arborvitae tall type screening of a natural element, enhancing the screening and also on the rooftop mechanical portion, too. So again, to think of our neighbors and from what the screening is currently there, we will be enhancing the shielding of the mechanicals greatly. So that's kind of an overview of how we are trying to meet the small plan area project and asking again for the height variance and the parking. It was also conversed with, between me and Carrie late today on the Kellogg side also. We are adding a bump out kind of over the existing entry. That does not project more than what is currently there, but it is, we could put it at a 34-foot setback as discussed with Carrie there rather than the 35. So we are still wanting to bump that corner as an accent, but that too is, doesn't quite meet the 35-foot setback, so. Any questions?
Commissioner Strauss?
You're currently operating across the street?
That's correct.
And what's the expansion? I mean, what, how many more children are?
I don't have a number count on the existing building.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Chad Dunkley. I'm the CEO of New Horizon Academy, and I, again, I want to thank you all for considering this. We've actually been in that building for 30 years now, across the street. And as you may have guessed, a lot's changed in early childhood in 30 years. And so what we'd like to do is redesign classrooms so we can have smaller group sizes, but we would be doubling the capacity from about 65 to 130.
Are you anticipating, I mean, you're probably retaining your existing?
Oh, yeah.
And expanding? I mean, so, okay.
Yes, that would be our goal and hope.
Okay. And I know the first sketch plan, there was a lot of blue, which now I'm liking this new design a lot. It seems to be that accent band above the windows, I mean, that's kind of the feature was before.
Kind of the New Horizon blue is.
Okay. You like blue?
It is the accent feature now, that's correct.
It's very attractive. It's good. Thank you.
And it keeps into now the building materials with the Edina Flats that we now know are going to flank either side, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is a great process, you know, to this point. I feel like you guys really embrace a lot of the comments, at least we put forth during the last sketch plan review, and it shows. One thing that I do recall that we discussed, and I don't see addressed, but would just like to hear maybe, you know, your explanation why, just on the rooftop, the north end, any screening, so like screaming screening, you know, the kids to the northern property, just the house right there. It looks like, you know, it's an open fence still, and I didn't know if there was any more consideration to?
Yeah, so the north wall essentially of that rooftop play yard is a fence as shown. And again, another reason is that is essentially our drainage off the roof does go to a gutter system to the front northwest corner. So again, not to barricade it off per se and to have it be more of an open, perhaps balcony feel for the neighbor rather than that much more siding. Currently, that rooftop play yard, essentially the parapet curb is at 26 foot six, and then the fence, the guard fence, essentially brings us up to 30 foot 10. So if we were to say, let's just wall that up for noise, we would be creating, you know, that much more siding and barrier between us and the neighbor. So we felt that keeping it more of an open deck feel would be more aesthetically pleasing for the neighbor.
I guess if they're not here to comment, I assume they agree.
No other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, this is our third public hearing. So is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
My name is John Victorson. I live at 7213 Cornelia Drive, which is nowhere near the property. I am the manager for the neighbor to the south of the proposed property at 4415 Valley View Road. We've been neighbors for many years. I really have no complaints. The parking, you should not worry about. Seriously, they have never, I think, used our parking lot for overflow. It's always been good. The noise that Mr. Bennett has mentioned has been a consideration for us for renting the apartments. I have lost prospective residents because of the noise. It's much like having a kid birthday party there every day, every day, every day. But I like kids. I had a screamer myself, could shake the rafters, so I can adapt. I can do, deal with it. It's going to be interesting having you on two sides now. But again, for your consideration, my analysis is why do churches put their bell towers, their bell up way high? Because it carries. And if you put the kids up on third floor, we're going to have a bit of noise traveling through the neighborhood. But again, I welcome the addition. They've been good neighbors. I have no consideration or complaints. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Great, so bring it back to the Planning Commission for comments.
Well, I'll move approval of the variances, subject to the conditions and findings outlined in the staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any comments? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the community comment, and this is, allows the community, anyone who wants to speak on an issue that's not already being covered on our agenda tonight. Was there anyone who has a community comment? No? So, motion to?
I move to close community comment.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So next is reports and recommendations. So this is the 70th and Cahill Small Area Plan. So this is coming back. So we had the public hearing at the last meeting, so we will not be opening it up for public hearing tonight. It will just be for the Planning Commission to discuss. And just kind of as a lead into that, we've received all of the submittals and comments that have been sent in, so that's been great to just see all that interest. So we have received all those, just so everyone is comfortable and knows that we've read all those. And just another little editorial from me is that I know a lot of the comments were really kind of focused on Mr. Teague and that this was, the proposed amendments were really coming from Commissioner Teague, not Commissioner Teague, Mr. Teague and staff. And that's not, that's not true. At the last Planning Commission meeting, it was actually the Planning Commission that asked staff to kind of look over that and make some proposed amendments. So I just wanted to make clear that it wasn't all, you know, their initiative, that it was really coming from the Planning Commission, so that wasn't quite fair. So with that, do you, how do you want to do this, Carrie? Do you want to?
Yeah, so the two things that you had recommended were those, that language that you asked staff to put together for you to consider, and then also some edits. So Commissioner Lee went through and made some edits to address the issues that the Planning Commission raised. That's all highlighted in yellow that was in the draft before you. And then the staff memo really addresses two things. It's the potential to allow greater density to provide affordable housing, and then the not to give property owners by right the ability to go to the height limits, to provide some language that that could be negotiated through a site plan or through a variance, that the underlying height overlay district would remain and that we wouldn't just amend the code by right. So that's the, those are, in a nutshell, the, that additional language that's been drafted. I know the Planning Commission talked about, can those things be handled in the land use section of the comprehensive plan? And they certainly can be, especially the density. For example, the Southdale Area Plan, it referenced the land use chapter where that's where all the densities are listed out. So that could be shifted to the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan. In terms of the height, that could be done also. It might be a little more awkward in that we're talking about height in a separate section. It can still be done. It could be referenced within this plan. But so just for the Planning Commission to consider, those elements could be moved into the land use chapter or amendments changed within the small area plan.
Did that make sense?
Can we do that one more time? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's really about the location of where these edits land. They can be moved to the greater, to the land use chapter of the comprehensive plan.
But as a planning commissioner, how would we do that? What action would we take to do that?
You could adopt the plan as written, and, you know, we haven't looked at the land use chapter yet. You know, that's part of the greater plan. Make recommendation that these issues be addressed in the land use chapter.
One of my, so, one of my objectives was to, if we do get requests for something beyond what was in the small area plan, that we would have some guidance for making a determination of, you know, approving it or denying it. But it seems like that could be general guidance in the land use plan, but you're saying that it would still be specific to the 70th and Cahill Small Area Plan, but.
In terms of the density, yes. So as you know, Met Council requires that we have to have that density number limit, both on the high end and the low end. So somewhere in the plan, we need to
Okay.
...provide for density, minimums and maximums.
So, so one of the things for consideration wherever it is in the comp plan is maintaining it at the 10 to 50 dwelling units per acre and then potentially increasing that up to 75 units per acre.
If you'd like to go that direction.
If we want to go that far. So, yeah, yeah, cool.
How, I'd like to be clear in the process we're going to follow. Will we determine if the plan is approved as written as one action? And then, will we then consider edits to that plan as proposed in the staff memo? Would that be a second determination? Or are we, I guess, how are we going to address? Because it seems to me it's accept as is or accept with edits. And, you know, how is that? I would like to be clear what people are saying yes or no to.
Well, as I was thinking, maybe we could pull out. So it looks like we have the two items, so the density.
The height, correct.
Those are the two.
With the amendments.
Correct.
And so would you be comfortable to kind of discuss those separately?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we could maybe make a decision.
Okay.
I don't know, unless you have suggestions, Carrie, a better way to do this.
Yeah, that's certainly an option. You know, you don't have to choose all of them. You might want to address height, not density, I guess. It's the will of the commission.
Okay. All right. So let's talk density piece first. Is that what you want to do? You were nodding.
Well, I was thinking, I was thinking that maybe what Jared was saying is that we choose to adopt or not adopt as written.
Yeah, right.
And then totally separate conversation, we make any amendments or edits.
Okay.
So we have, we have different votes, right?
Yes.
Is that, I think that makes sense.
So make a motion.
So a motion to adopt the small area plan for 70th and Cahill as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? How many seconds? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So that was, I'm sorry, two nays? Okay. Okay, so.
Maybe we should discuss.
All right, I'm sorry. So let's.
What do we, what was the result of the first vote? Did we?
Well, we should open it for discussion before we went for the vote. So I apologize for that. Okay, so we had a motion to approve it as written, a second. Now let's open it for a discussion.
Okay.
Was there discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I, well, I have some prepared notes, so give me a little bit. Okay. I'm speaking as, as a co-chair of the small area group, Commissioner Lee, who is not here. We have been in frequent conversations and we are completely in, in agreement on, on the remarks, you know, that are high prepared here. The 70th Cahill Small Area Plan was delivered to the city in mid-October 2018. Final editing on this, on this report, you know, was accomplished, you know, August, you know, through October of this year. And there were any number, the, the number of meetings, the public input, the surveys, the questionnaires, all of that has been well documented. It was, it was pretty much the standard process that other small area, you know, groups had, had, had conducted. We, you know, and it was through this process, you know, that our, our conclusions regarding, and the two big issues, height and density, were a result of this work. We came to these numbers as they were, you know, in the project through painstaking kind of a review process. We relied on BICOR and Associates, Tim Griffin and, and Bill Smith, you know, as kind of experts. And, you know, like our first question is, what does density look like? You know, and we looked at 17 projects in Edina, either completed or, you know, in the process. Actually, we relied on, we relied on the consultants to, to, with issues broad and specific. We looked at the topography of the site. An interesting point is from the northwest corner of the 70th Cahill area to its southeast corner, there's almost a 90-foot difference. I mean, it's built in a hillside. I mean, and that was, became important. True, our final numbers were compromises, but the small area group agreed that these numbers represented a consensus of the group agreed, that the group agreed with, right? They, we were not unanimous. We did not, and we should not have developed the small area plan with any specific project in mind, right? The planning commission is being asked to approve the small area plan with, with edits outlined in the staff memo, which we'll get to. Like I said, both the co-chairs and the majority of the members of the small area group oppose these edits. And we recommend approval of the small area plan as originally submitted. Quickly, I'll go through. One very important is the integrity of the small area plan process. What these edits feel like are, appear to be like last minute changes. They lack transparency. I ask other members of the commission who are on small area planning groups, how are you going to react to changes such as being proposed after you've spent a year or more preparing the project and it's written? And it's, so that's a very big thing. It feels like spot zoning because of a particular project. That's, the plan does support the city affordable housing policy. You know, it's in our guiding principles, you know? Page nine, it's, it's, the issue with the affordable housing seems to be a timing. It was terrible timing. I think things came through when the project was being written and a proposal came through. Specifically, the volume of the correspondence, this is just what we received. There's probably another 20 or 30 that only exist via email, not printed. I counted over 20, or no, I said, I counted over 60 submittals that I reviewed, 85% you know, were consistently saying approve as is. I mean, that's the public. What, what, what we may create in making these edits, creating the flexibility, I think will be nothing compared to the storm that's going to be created by changes, by making the changes. Supposedly, these, these changes are to create flexibility. We don't, we think our plan is flexible. We talked 10 to 50. We could have come in and said 10, 10 units and let it maneuver and get to 30. I mean, we said 50, you know, is an appropriate, you know, density. There is a process for amending the comp plan. You know, it's not, you know, that's, it's sort of like, that shouldn't be the concern that we don't want to have to go. It's not a good thing, I think, to have to go and amend the comp plan if that's necessary. But I think the small area plan should stand. Yeah, and so it's our hardly, hearty recommendation that we approve it as written. So, thank you.
So is there more stat plays? Is there more discussion?
Commissioner Strauss, you, you made a point that the small area plan generated a number because everybody that attended those meetings and everybody that voted on it felt that that was the right number and the right height. But one of the pieces it doesn't include is just the way the world works. You cannot build affordably, and I'm not talking about affordable housing, I'm talking about market rate at that height. It doesn't work. It hasn't worked in 30 years. The few examples that exist out there prove that it doesn't work. The few examples that exist out there are extremely expensive units. There's a couple down next to the, next to the Walker. There's a couple that are going up near the last project that we looked at off Wooddale. But the simple fact is, five stories is what works and less than that doesn't. So what you're saying is, we'd like it to be less. Well, that would be nice. But what you're going to get is absolutely nothing because it doesn't work. The numbers don't pencil out. I've done multifamily housing for 40 years. It doesn't work. So I appreciate the fact that folks want it to be less, would like it to be less. There's lots of developers who would like it to be less. But their accountants tell them they can't do it. So what do you do then?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I also echo Jerry's comments about the integrity of the process because I view these small area plans as so important for the community to come together and speak to what they see as potential for that spot. And some of those things will come to fruition and some won't. And there'll be some projects that will come along down the road that will require amendments. But to create an amendment in the very short time between the end of a very thorough process and it getting approved, it just seems unnecessary. And if there is something down the road that requires a process or that requires an amendment, we'll go through that process. But I think we need to respect the hard work that went into creating the small area plan and not change it before it's even approved. Because these people put in the time and it is less about a particular project and more about the vision for the people who worked on it. And so I would advocate that we approve it as it is and then separately talk about any amendments because I think that's respectful to the people who put in the time and it's respectful to the vision of the people who live there. And there will be room for amendments down the road if there are great projects that require amendments. And it, this is not a comment on not wanting affordable housing or any particular project.
Everyone's talking about as written. And I think when you're talking about as written. This plan, you need to go to certain pages of this plan and understand what it is allowing. And it's certain things that cannot be fixed at a later date. So if you go to page 35, policy number one, and I'm sorry to be geeky about you, but you need to understand what this is telling you. The city will adopt this plan as an update to the 2018 Edina comprehensive plan and amend current zoning and related ordinances to align with this plan. Now, if I'm a resident that's concerned about density, you really need to be concerned about what this allow, what this does. Because this plan zones most of this property, roughly half this property for five stories. It strips out the current limit of two stories and zones it for five. Period. There's, that's, that's what it's zoned at. And I can tell you, my four years in the planning commission, we've never seen a project come through here that hasn't been really close to the limit allowed. So rather than having the protection and knowing that we're two and maybe you can go above that, five is what a developer is allowed. Policy two requires that future redevelopment be reviewed in light of the building height limits, which we just discussed, and the map is there available in, in the packet, and the site-specific guidelines. Those are on page 46. You know, and that's a schematic map of some amenities, a public gathering space, street connectivity, future, potential future rail access. But as the plan says, while the final configuration will depend on actual development patterns, it serves as a guide as to what should be required. There's nothing specific about what needs to happen. And then finally, as we look at the final step is what is designated as land use. In general, small to moderate scale, commercial, residential, mixed-use buildings primarily serving onsite residents and adjacent neighborhoods. Primary uses encouraged are neighborhoods serving retail services, offices, studios, institutional, residential. Very broad what you can do. So my concern with this is not the density. My concern is very specific to five stories height limit. Because that has been put into zoning. When the developer comes to us and says, I've got a project, it's five stories, it meets the site-specific guidelines, it follows the architecture guidelines, we have zero power to influence that, make any changes to that project because we've given up all the leverage we have, which would be to, for them to require rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment. And if you think about that, you have roughly nine acres that is zoned to five stories. At 50 units an acre, that gets you 450 units of housing that goes in there. And that's big and that's scale and it, there's really could be nothing we could do to stop that or influence that. That is what's written in this plan. So I'm really concerned that adopting this plan as written is going to lead, very clearly lead, lead the developer or a property owner, if not enable another property owner, to put a big, a significant amount of density in, across a large part of the property, of the site. And it's not to say one or two projects at five stories would be a bad thing, but when you contemplate nine acres, which is roughly half of the entire small area plan at that height, it's like taking the Onyx in Southdale and putting it across half the site. I don't think that is what the residents contemplate. I don't think that's what you want. I don't think that's what fits in the neighborhood node. Certain parcels maybe, but not to that level of scale. And I haven't been able to address with, you know, what you could conceivably do on Cahill, three to four stories. So that is my concern with this plan. It's not with the density. It's not with the intent or the hope, but it's specifically how it is worded around height. And that's what should be concerning you. I'm sorry, it's very nerdy, it's very much in the details, but those are the five pages that you should be, that will be discussed when a plan comes before this commission for review. It's pages 35 through 42. Everything else kind of falls away, but those are the pages that will matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I echo what Commissioner Thorson brought up and brought it up the last meeting as well. And that, that is my only contention with how it's written. It's, it's a philosophy difference of how building heights regulated. And we have an odd way to protect the city and influence proposals that come to, to us in this way by, by having that one amendment, which strikes the, the city will amend, you know, the building height overlay districts to change or study areas, current two-story, three-story max to five stories. So when you do that, by right, developers can come in and interpret the plan as, as it's guided. And I have, I have, like, everything in this plan, I, I totally appreciate and believe in was great work and I feel like that is a great framework. But we've seen, if you have 10 developers come and you're guiding this one parcel to something that it should be, we're going to see a bunch of different things and we'll probably see a bunch of five-story things proposed. And is that the right thing? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But when you see the pyramid of discretion that we have to work off of when it isn't a zoning amendment, we're at the top and we don't, we don't have much influence, nor do you. So that is, that is why we want that amendment. It is to protect us, not to provide flexibility. It's really to provide leverage for us on the commission. Once proposals come to us and we can hold up that document and say, okay, well, if you are trying to do four or five stories, we really get more discretion at the table. And then that can help to spearhead better public realm improvements as well as other things that we'd want to see and that you as a community would want to see there. But otherwise, we wouldn't have that same sort of power legally.
I'm going to defer to Commissioner Strauss, who wants to correct me. But I think these are good comments that Commissioner Thorson and Commissioner Bennett are making. But I think it's a matter of characterizing them. I, I think one is it, were the, the, the things you described, were they issues that were missed by the working group? Were there, were these choices made by, knowing choices made by the working group? And it's my understanding, they understood this, they had these discussions, that they were knowing choices that were made as, as part of their discussion. So then the question gets to be, do we substitute our judgment for the judgment of the working group and the neighbors? I think, I think they, I think they made these choices feeling that there was another step too, besides just having a leverage or flexibility negotiation with each developer, which is that there was going to be, that there could be deeper definition of uses and activities at, at, within parcels. So I personally am not necessarily comfortable with just imposing my judgment on, over the judgment of the neighborhood, assuming that this, that was, you know, the, Todd does a good job of saying, this is what could happen. I think he, I disagree that he was geeky or nerdy. I think he laid it out pretty clearly. You know, I think, but I, my understanding is that was what was understood. And I'm okay with that, if that's what the neighbors and the working group chose. As an aside, I mean, we're coming to the end of the small area plan process. I'm, I'm concerned how we got to this point. And I don't know if there's much we can do about it now or much we could do to affect it, but it would have been nice to be having these discussions before the document was completed. I don't know how, if we did or if we missed it or, you know, but I think, I think we have what we have. Unless, I'm going to conclude myself now, people are staring at me. Unless someone, you know, Jerry or somebody says, no, we didn't see that. We missed this concept. But I do think that that, this was a planned choice.
So to that point, it seems like what you're saying is that we should defer to the neighborhood, every decision about the neighborhood. Okay. So what do you, all right, well, what are you saying?
Deferring to the working group process.
Sure. Sure. The working group is a stand-in for the neighborhood. The working group is a stand-in for the neighborhood.
Sure.
When I think-
Let me cut out. I mean, if they came out with something that I thought was illegal, or unethical, or, you know, clear path to ruin, I'd feel differently. But I don't think any of those things apply here.
Sure. But is that the standard we need as a planning commission to overrule something in a neighborhood? I'm not saying, I think either, you know, we should vote either way, but I'm just saying, you know, it comes before us for a reason, right? And that we're supposed to provide our knowledge of the entire city and how this neighborhood fits into the city, rather than just being, you know, rubber stamped, saying, yeah, let's do what they say. And I'm not saying I'm voting for it or against it, I'm just saying, you know, I think our goal is to review it, and review it knowing what we know about the city, what we know about the overall comp plan, and see how this fits into it. That's, that's my point.
My comment was kind of following up on Commissioner Bennett, and that was my comment at the last planning commission meeting too, is that I just wanted to see, for us to have that kind of protective layer too, for when we do get requests to go, you know, to amend the small area plan. So that's where I was just looking, if we could do it more general within the land use chapter, and not specifically amend this plan. But I do want us to have some guidance when, if we do, if, you know, and we will, we'll get requests for comp plan amendments, just because we always do. And so that was, that was my intention with, you know, these amendments, was just to give that protection. But I'm thinking that there might be ways to do that without amending specifically the small area plan, so that's why I prematurely voted high before we had our discussion. But, yeah, slipped that one in. So, so now are we done with discussions? So we're, we've got a motion, a second on approving the amendment, the small area plan as written. So do we need to take like a roll call vote on this? Was there enough of a-
I think one question I have, and maybe it's for other people, but regarding these amendments, I mean, say for instance, Commissioner Thorson and I clearly support deleting that, you know, number four, the, the building height overlay. If that stays in there, is there a way to make an amendment in the comprehensive plan that contradicts that? Or, you know, are we stuck with that?
Yeah, I'm not sure how you do that.
That one, that one would be tough. Yeah.
Because it seems like you did mention density that can be taken care of, moved over, or whatever. But it can stay in, you can talk about it separately.
Yeah, that would be consistent with other, other plans.
And just to counter that, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the height as proposed in the small area plan. I'm just saying that they come, we get in a proposal for six stories, that's where, okay, then we're like, okay, well, what's the merits? If we do that, what's our, you know, what can we get for that? So. So, okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? So, right, am I doing this right? This is kind of dragging out that I'm getting a little-
I think you've done fine.
Okay, confused. So let's take, do we, is it enough that we should do a roll call vote on this one?
Your call.
Yeah, let's do that.
Commissioner Miranda?
So, I'm sorry. So what exactly are we-
We're, the motion is to approve it without amendments.
With the idea that we may amend it tonight, or no?
No, you'd be approving it. But we have the, we're gonna then discuss potentially adding some of these other amendments to the general comp plan, right? Wasn't that, weren't we kind of splitting it apart? Okay.
We're, we're voting to approve the plan as written. Small area plan.
Yeah. Yeah, right now. Yeah.
Is the vote necessary? I know public comments aren't allowed, but it seems from the audience that you're struggling with this decision in terms of what your options are. Is it an option to table it? Or deny it?
Nope. No, we're gonna, we've got a motion, we're voting.
Nay.
Commissioner Thorson?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yes.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Nemrov?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Nay.
Commissioner Bennett?
Nay.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Chair Olson?
Aye. So what was that?
Four-four.
I didn't need extra fingers.
Yeah. Okay. What do we do with the tie?
Well, either way, it goes to the city council on January 8th, so it can go to them as a four-four non-recommendation.
Okay. All right. So that is, be that. Okay.
We have a motion to forward the revision proposed by the planning commission on November seven, November 14th. Along with the small area plan. It'd be December 12th. That would be the memo that's on December 12th, but it was recommended by the planning commission on the 14th. That's where this, that's where this came from. Planning commission recommended it on the, on November 14th. It was generated or given to us on December 12th, to pass that on to city council as a recommendation that they approve it.
As-
I would make that as a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So discussion? Here we go. So are you-
I'm not clear here.
Right, are you saying then to pass on the amendment?
Pass this on to city council with our approval. The edits.
The edits to the small area plan.
Correct.
Okay. So I think, I think I know what this vote will turn out like. Yeah, but let's just make it. Okay, so any other discussion? No, there is-
I think we've already discussed it pretty thoroughly.
Right, okay, so do another roll call.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
No.
Commissioner Nemrov?
Nay.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Yeah.
Chair Olson?
Nay. Can I explain why? I'm saying, because I, I don't know that, I don't want, I think some of these could go for the general, who am I talking to? General comp plan for that kind of overall guidance versus amending the small area plan.
And that's actually what the memo says, is the density piece goes in the land use chapter, and that the height would, would be in the small area plan.
Oh, I am sorry, you made those corrections that we talked, that's in here.
And then I wanted to explain mine as well, because it seems somewhat contradictory.
Can I change my vote if I, because I, no. Anyway, okay, so I, I was mistaken, but I'm still gonna hold by it. Go for it.
I just wanted to explain that my vote for this as is, is in respect to the group that worked on it, and the importance of having it passed forward as the small area plan group wanted it to be. But the amendment is the idea that, I think it is appropriate that the city council look at this in the aggregate with all of the small plans, and, you know, the land use and everything else, and consider these amendments. And it's in their purview to then make amendments to the small area plan if they think it's appropriate. But I think it's important for us to support the process. So that's why my votes might have seemed contradictory, but I want to support the planning process and the small area plans. But I do think the amendments are worth consideration.
Yeah. And I do too, but I voted wrong. So, it's 10 o'clock. Okay.
So this will be before the city council on January 8th. And that will be a public hearing.
So- How did he change that? I mean, we were just talking about that yesterday.
Let's do it earlier.
All right, I don't care. It passed, I would have been. Just keep going, we're just gonna talk loud. Correspondence. I don't think there is any. So-
Excuse me, everyone, 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 if you could just take your conversations outside, please.
We have more to talk about. Chair and member comments, are there any chair and member comments? Chair and-
Yes.
Yes, I have comments.
Okay. You do have a comment? Just one more, sorry. Sorry, could everyone please, if you're going to talk, I'm gonna need my gavel. Thank you. Okay, anyway, let's just talk loud. What's your-
So I just wanted to point out that the Southwest Light Rail ceremonial groundbreaking was November 30th, so it's actually finally going to happen. So that's nice. So it's happening all around Adana, so it's something we need to think about as we work on our future development. And then also related to transportation is, a few weeks ago Tesla was, its market cap exceeded that of BMW, and last week it surpassed that of Mercedes also. So electric cars and new forms of transportation are, are gonna be transforming cities in the future. We need to think about that. Thanks.
Okay. Oh, sir.
Just to kind of piggyback on what you said earlier, and if, if people didn't catch it, but it seemed like a lot of these amendments were attributed to, you know, planner Teague, and just wanted to make sure that people fully understand that that was the direction of us during a work session, not him and the city staff trying to organize some sort of hijack. That was the planning commission that recommended. Yeah.
Hope that, you know, gets, I hope you all understand that, because that was, that was very hard to read and to keep hearing, you know, you guys just grilled, and it wasn't-
I appreciate that, thank you.
You were following our direction. Yeah, anything else? Apologies, Carrie. I just have to say again, I, because we were making these comments yesterday to do this, and you, you were quick to-
It was actually last week we, I did that. Maybe we talked last week.
Oh my God.
I think we did.
Okay. Well, so it goes. Okay.
January 9th. We canceled the meeting the day after Christmas.
I have a question. The Southdale Work Group, the Design Experience Guidelines, since we didn't vote that forward today, what's the timeline on that? Because if it is soon, I'd like to have some of those discussions sooner than right up until we have to make a decision. Is that next month, or is that a few months out?
It's probably in January. We do it similar to how we've done the small area plans, where we would start with the work session. And we dedicate the whole work session to just go through that. And then we'd set public hearings from there.
It seems like it's pretty far along, but we haven't physically received it in any of our packets, so maybe if you could send an email, just linking people to that document.
Be light reading for you over the holidays.
Well, yeah, we got a month now, so.
Move to adjourn?
Second?
Aye.